Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Asheville City Council Meeting. If you could just take a moment and silence your cellphones. Also, if you'd like to sign up to speak and you haven't already done so, the sign up is out in the hall. If you didn't sign up to speak and you decide later you do want to sign up to speak, you can go back out in the hall and sign up to speak. All right, so, and if you're in the hall, please be very quiet. Okay, so if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening, we have one proclamation, and that's the recognition of the efforts of the Mills River Partnership Restoration and Protection of Riverbank and Riparian Buffer. And we've got a few folks here. Please join me down here for the reading of the proclamation. This is our special proclamation microphone. Whereas the city of Asheville owns approximately 300 acres of land in Mills River at 4037 Haywood Road. And whereas the city maintains a water processing facility at this location and draws water from the Mills River. And whereas the city pledges to provide safe drinking water for the residents and customers of Asheville and its water customers. And whereas the city strives to be a good steward of the land and water in and around the region, including the Mills River, which is home to endangered mussels and salamander species. And whereas the city recognizes the benefit of partnering with conservation organizations like the Mills River Partnership, whose mission is to monitor, preserve, and improve water quality in the Mills River watershed. And whereas the city, along with the Mills River Partnership and the North Carolina Land and Water Fund, restored approximately 2,500 linear feet of stream bank along the Mills River and protected approximately 14 acres of land adjacent to the river with a permanent restoration declaration. And whereas this protection safeguards clean drinking water and a healthy river for the future. Now therefore, I, Esther Van Hemmer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby recognize the efforts of the Mills River Partnership to restore approximately 2,500 linear feet of riverbank along the Mills River and protect 14 acres of Riparian buffer upstream of the water intake at the Mills River Water Plant.
Well, thank you. I'm Maria Wise, and I'm the Executive Director of Mills River Partnership. And I just want to thank the City of Asheville for stewarding your land and water out there and protecting this important water source. And with partnerships like this, I think we can continue to provide clean and abundant water for residents of Asheville and all the many species that rely on that river.
Well, again, not to repeat a lot of information already that you've heard, I'm Bert Langkis. I'm the Chair of the Mills River Partnership. Thank you for the support that the town of Asheville gives and continues to give. We will do our best to constantly improve the watershed. Thank you.
Damon Hearn, Western Field Rep for North Carolina Land and Water Fund, formerly Clean Water Manager Trust Fund. We've got a couple of different projects with the City of Asheville. This one is very exciting, our most recent one here. I appreciate you all's partnership. We couldn't fund restoration projects without willing landowners, and you all were certainly a great example of that. If you haven't taken a walk out there with Maria, I encourage you to do so, and thank you for your partnership.
Maggie, do we have any overflow? Okay, you're laying there. Next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda, and Item G will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without Item G?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. So, does anyone have a sign up to you? Is there? Sorry. No one?
No one.
Okay.
That said, I just wanted to note about Item L. We have discussed this in committees, and I appreciate that staff has confirmed that parking enforcement will be involved in Item L after we do community engagement. I'm looking forward to what community engagement looks like in our housing authority neighborhoods as we look at parking enforcement.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without Item G. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to presentations and reports.
Do we want to come back to?
I'm sorry, we have to do Item G.
And I asked to pull Item G, which is the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the master agreement to give the City of Asheville Purchasing Manager authority to sign purchasing agreements with Axon Enterprise. And I was curious about the goal that's stated in the documents attached to Item G, and it says the goal is a connected and engaged community. However, we have not yet connected with or engaged the community around the use of drone surveillance equipment. And so I'm not supporting Item G because we don't have a policy in place where how drones are used for surveilancing our community and how that advances our goals for reimagining public safety. So that's why, even though it's part of a larger package, I am not supporting it tonight.
I'll add that the Environment Safety Committee is taking up the policy conversation for drones, I think in our January, February cycle, so that's in the docket for an Environment Safety conversation.
I have a question. Whenever we renew contracts, they usually come through committee first. I was wondering why it didn't come through committee before being placed on consent
City Council and City Manager, I'm Captain Hawkins with the Police Department. And while I was in arrangements to renegotiate these contracts and this equipment, I was informed that the price increase would go into effect on January 1st. I was told that the day before Thanksgiving. And so we decided that we really needed to push this through. There was a potential for 15% cost increase.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Item G?
So move, Sandra.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Did you get that hanging? Okay, now we have concluded the consent agenda. Under Presentations and Reports, the first item is the presentation of the fiscal year 2023 audit. We know how to get exciting here.
So Mayor Werther getting the presentation pulled up. Deborah Campbell serves as City Manager. I wanted to just say just a couple of words in terms of, you know, why do we do an audit? It's kind of an indication of our financial and fiscal health, and it also provides us with, and to the community as well as to elected officials, you know, kind of best practices in terms of auditing and fiscal practices. And so this is to assure the community that we are utilizing very scarce resources in a very responsible and legal manner. So I will turn it over to Tony McDowell.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tony McDowell, Finance Director. I'm going to have just a few brief introductory slides tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to our external auditors from the firm of Cherry Beckett, who are here tonight to present the external audit, and then I'll come back at the end with a few follow-up and finished slides as well. Okay, so just some key takeaways from the presentation tonight. The fiscal year 2023 year-end audit was completed and submitted to the North Carolina Local Government Commission on River Six as required. I think, as you all know, for folks out in the public, our fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30th. So this was the fiscal year-end audit for the year that ended on June 30th, 2023. The audit opinion issued by Cherry Beckett was unmodified or clean, which is the highest level of assurance that they can provide. Cherry Beckett, as a part of their audit, did identify two accounting errors in the materials that staff originally submitted to them. And as a result of those errors, they were required to report findings to you all, and to the city manager, and they'll talk a little bit more about those findings tonight to you all. And then finally, and then I'll come back after they're done and talk a little bit more about this, but one of the key metrics we look at each year as we wrap up the audit is our year-end unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which for fiscal year 2023 came in at 18.8%, which is slightly above the city policy threshold of 15%. And as you'll see, you all will see with the chart that I have at the end, it's in line with our results from recent prior years. So why have an external audit? Ms. Campbell touched upon this briefly. First of all, it is required by state statute. Every local government in North Carolina must have its accounts audited each year by a certified public accounting firm or an accountant certified by the Local Government Commission as qualified to audit local government accounts. The auditor, just as a reminder, is selected by and reports directly to you all, the Governing Board. Another reason to have an external audit is required by the federal government, something called a single audit. For any local government recipients who spend $750,000 or more in federal financial assistance, the federal government requires the single audit, and we do spend more than that each year in federal grants. So we're required by the federal government to have a single audit. And then also, it's best practice. It provides transparency to the public that we're spending tax dollars wisely, and it also provides assurance to our debt rating agencies that we're meeting all their covenants as well. And also, I just want to stress the importance of the independent review that we get from external auditors, and we have a policy here in Asheville that we put our contract out forbid every five years, and so we rotate firms, and this is our first year with Cherry Beckett as our auditor. The results, as we said, City of Asheville, there's four types of opinions that auditors can issue. We received this year the unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that they can provide. If you really want to dive into the details of the financial report, there's two things out on our website that I would point you all toward. One is the November 1 dated representation letter from the audit firm to us, which really goes into detail about the areas that they looked at with the city and details the fact that they found no fraud, illegal acts, or violations of laws and regulations. And as I said, the auditors will review the findings I mentioned during their presentation. And then finally, if you really want to dive into the city finances, we have a, and I can't remember how long it is, it's 150, 200-page document that's out on our website. It's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFR, that's the acronym, if you really want to see and read all about City of Asheville finances and stay up at night. So with that, I'll hand it over to our team from Cherry Beckett for their presentation.
Mayor, could we ask if there's an empty seat next to someone?
If you have an empty seat next to you, can you raise your hand so we can see how many seats are available? It's pretty much a sardine situation here. Okay.
Well, thank you for having me here today. This audit begins all the way back in the beginning of March and April as we contract for the audit services, and culminates with the end of October, completing the audit and now presenting to you all here. So it's a long process that we go through. We actually met with a subset of your committee council here in a committee meeting a month ago and went over this presentation in detail. I'll be going over pretty fast the results here, but if anyone wants any more information or has any clarification questions, please feel free to ask me. Just going right into it, I would like to just first recognize our team, to you all, that completed this audit. Myself as the Engager Director, Scott Anderson was the second partner reviewer, Richard Hart, who's with me today, was Senior Manager on this engagement, and then we also had Bruce Phillips and Rachel Combs as the Senior and Associate. So we audited the financial statements of the City of Asheville in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also audited the financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. That's all in which to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And so we did this, and so we completed our audit, and we issued our report on November 1. And as Tony had mentioned, we issued a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, and that's the highest level of opinion that we can give under our auditing standards. We also completed our audit on compliance, and in terms of our compliance, we're looking at your federal and state dollar spent to make sure that they were compliant with the grant agreements, and we issued a report which was also an unmodified or clean opinion. And those unmodified opinions really cover on the compliance side of things and then also on the financial statement. In terms of management responsibilities, and the next few slides are just more standard things that we are required to communicate with you all on a yearly basis. So Note 1 is where your significant accounting policies lie within the ACFR. And then on Note 1 as well, you have a note that says you adopted a new accounting standard which related to subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is basically putting an asset and a liability on your books for any software that you have that extends beyond one-year commitment. In terms of related parties, we're to make you aware, we noted any related party transactions that management did not already make us aware of, and we noted none. We noted no issues with any related party transactions as part of our testing. If we come across anything that we consider to be significant or unusual in nature, we're to make you aware of that. We did not come across anything that we felt met that definition. Developing the financial statements, there are a number of estimates that are used by management to develop the numbers on the financial statements, the biggest of which are your pension numbers and your other post-employment benefit liabilities that sit as a liability on your financial statements. We look at the estimates, we look at key assumptions used in those estimates, and we look at significant trends that relate, and we determine that they were reasonable in basis and they were consistent with the previous years as well. Financial statement disclosures are neutral, clear, and consistent, and we did not note any particular disclosures that we needed to make you aware of or point out. Non-attest services, so attest being audit services, so this would be any non-audit services we perform. We do provide assistance with preparation of the financial statements, and then we also present with the data collection form that's filed with the federal government that notes our results of our federal financial audit. All the non-attest services were determined that the management had individuals on staff that had the skills, knowledge, and expertise to oversee those services and ultimately take responsibility for financial statements, which is management's responsibility. And we are not aware of any concerns or issues with independence with us and management or the city as a whole, and we are considered independent of the city. We had no difficulties encountered, we had no disagreements with management. If we have an auditor consultation, we have to make you aware of that. The one thing we had this year was just beginning balance sheet work, which means basically looking at the prior year work papers from the predecessor auditor and making sure we can rely on their opinion as we move forward into this, our audit. Management representation letter was dated November 1 and signed by management, which is the date of the financial statements. There were no management consultations, no shopping for an opinion, not going to another audit firm and seeing if they had a different way to apply accounting standards. There were no other findings or issues noted within our audit, and there were no fraud or illegal acts noted as part of our audit as well. And lastly, there were no events or conditions that we noted that caused us to believe that there's a going concern with the city. These next two slides just talk about our responsibilities on other information that's included in your annual comprehensive financial report. This is required supplementary information, this is your management discussion analysis, and then pension schedules in the back. We do look at this information, but we do not provide any assurance over it. Supplementary information is your budget-to-actual schedules and other combining schedules of statements. We do look at that information and provide in relation to opinion, that in relation to the financial statements, they are fairly presented. And lastly here, your introductory statistical section, which is in the front and back of your financial statements. We do look and read over that information for consistency, but again, we do not provide any assurance on this information either. As part of internal controls, we are to make you aware of any internal control-related matters that we've become aware of as part of our audit. This slide basically is just telling you that we are responsible for looking at compliance over the audit and giving an opinion on compliance, but we do not give an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls, but we do report on any issues with internal control if we become aware of any. This slide defines for you what a material weakness versus significant deficiency is when reporting any findings in controls. Material weakness being one that based on the way the controls are structured, there's a possibility that a material error could go undetected. This could be because we found an error that was material, or it could be an error that was not material but could be material if the control is not in place. I think it went very well for being a first year as well.
Thank you for that comment, Dan. I would say the same for working with the team from Cherry Beckett, and thanks for the comment, Councilmember Omen. And I also want to thank our Assistant Finance Director, Becky Ogilvy. She's here sitting in the second row. It's really all her hard work that gets us through this. She has a team, but the amount of work that falls on her during that time period is pretty amazing, and she did a great job this year, as usual. I do want to finish with just a couple of quick things. Like I said, I wanted to go over the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and we talked about this in the committee as well. We ended the year at 18.8%. You can see that it's down some from the prior year, and that's primarily because we did tap some of the fund balance as a part of the current budget that we're in right now, but we're still well within the range that we have seen over the last 10 years, where we typically find our fund balance somewhere between the 15% to 20% range. And then I think this is probably my last slide, just the next steps. Dan mentioned the letter that's required to go out to the LDC because of the two errors that he identified. We're in the process of drafting up that letter. We'll circulate it to the full council, and then we do have to get four signatures on that letter and send in within 60 days of tonight's presentation. And then we are also implementing corrective action plans for those two findings, and we'll begin reporting back to the Audit Committee at its next meeting in January and regularly throughout the year on our progress there. So reminder again, those are the key takeaways, and I won't run through those in the interest of time, but would be happy to answer any other questions or if you all want to move on to the next item on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you for the follow-up. I had asked a question about the 5% advanced firefighter certification pay incentive during our budget process, and we had originally allocated a quarter million this fiscal year, and it looks like from the staff report that we're on track to be at 724,000, so it's being well-used and engaged in.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you all.
And if I could, I just wanted to also thank staff for all the work. This may sound routine and rudimentary, but it's not. It's a lot of heavy work, so thank you, staff, very much.
All right, next, we're going to hear from Dr. Mullen on the Reparations Project Timeline Extension Presentation. Is there a...
I've been asked to address the City Council, and I am a professor, and I use data, and I talk about those things in the outcomes and in points. But I need to address you first as your neighbor. I was selected as Chair of the Commission by folk who have lived and grown up here in Asheville. They've actually experienced much of what I place in the form of data. They've experienced the education system, the healthcare system. They have firsthand knowledge and have told stories throughout, over the year now that I've chaired, about their treatment by various systems and institutions in the city and in this county. It's very difficult to stand in my shoes and listen to the stories that basically prevented me and my neighbors from escaping Watts. These are the same stories, except Watts didn't have the opportunity to address it neighborhood by neighborhood and become a community as we approached city government. We never got that far. And I ask you to very seriously consider the value and depth of your experiences and experiences of the commissioners, as we ask for more time, to do...
It's a gains for the community of Asheville. Because you see, to improve education is to improve for everyone. To improve healthcare, to improve mental healthcare, to offer recommendations that might address the most severest of our situations is to address us all. And so the idea of being constricted is moving to the idea of the possibilities of what the reparations commission can bring to you, and I'm asking you for time to do that. Hoping that what we leave you with is better than what we found you with. I appreciate this time.
I have a question.
Please.
A couple, actually, but I'll start with this one. You mentioned that the Stop the Harm auditor was going to come back with its findings early in the year. Do you anticipate that in addition to those findings, they will also come up with potential solutions? Should there be any findings of harm?
Yes.
Or... okay.
Yes. I'm saying, I'm sorry for cutting you off, I really am, but I got excited, is that I asked them specifically for best practices. If you see something that works, please let us know in these areas of how best to address disparities or how best to generate wealth or how best to get access to and provide healthcare, and not just by race but also by gender. You see, because for some reason, I can't explain it, when we talk about race and we talk about gender, we aren't necessarily talking about black women. You have to address it specifically, and that takes time, particularly when we talk about the intersection of those five areas. It just takes time, and I can't find any precedent for us to follow it. We're making it as we go. We're literally making it as we go. Sorry.
And going down that road, when I look at other areas that have begun to do this work, one thing that differentiates us from them is we seem to be the only area that is solely relying on community members. I wonder if the commission has given thought to pulling in subject matter experts and when that likely would happen? And then while I'm on a frame of thought, one thing that would be particularly helpful for me, although, you know, I'm a member of the community, but in this seat, it'd be very helpful to me if I could have a delineation of these are policies, right, that caused this harm, and I need those policies directly linked to harm and a quantifiable level of harm. I need to know who qualifies for reparations, for example. Just very basic things would be helpful to me in my role here. So if you can answer that second question, I just wanted to throw that.
Thank you. One of the things, if you've noticed, if you've watched our progress, we've addressed the end of the resolutions that were actually passed by the city and by the county. We've addressed disparities in these five primary areas. If you look at the full resolution, it actually begins with enslavement and works its way through segregation and mass incarceration and lynching as well as urban renewal before getting to a direction of also offering the resolutions apologies and empowering us to address the disparities. Another reason for time is that being made of community members is important and it's a vital link, and yet is a third reason for asking for more time in terms of engaging that community regarding what we have come up with and what they think about it. We would not have time to do that. But in terms of engaging subject area experts, that's where the way of addressing the rest of the resolution comes in. I don't know if our current commissioners are prepared to address the historical harm that has happened here in Asheville. Other areas, I've talked to people, I've talked to the reparations folk in Los Angeles and San Francisco and California. I've talked to people in Atlanta who are just now starting their reparations process, and they're all beginning with enslavement and working in a way historically towards the present. We are the only ones I can find that have worked where we're from the present and are going backwards in time. And it makes sense, I think what we are doing makes sense as well as what they're doing. But in our sense, convincing folk that this was a vital exercise in public policy areas was an important thing. And so the idea of improving the schools while our children are still in them mattered. And so we chose to address disparities. However, to go and address other areas of the resolutions, I am fully convinced we will also need extended time with area subject experts, historians, social scientists, folk who have worked in the field, who are still with us, who have not passed on, who remember, but try to address it in professional ways during that timeframe. We're losing that generation as we speak, the folk who desegregated the city, those people. But before their time, we still have to account for the cost of segregation in this town. We have to address the cost of enslavement in this town, not just the cost of monetizing, but also the cost of human relationships, the future development of the city, and this is another, I'm sorry for going on, but this is another one. What I've found is that we look for malevolence. We look for hostility and violence as markers of racism. What I have found, though, in looking at this, is that it's more a process of neglect. It's more a process of being left out of the current development plans or the development plans of the 50s or 60s and 70s, being isolated and ostracized. And as progress took place, you did not. And you combine it with the overt hostilities of everyday racism. It takes us toll. And to watch the commissioners now address it, both, I know it was not intentional, but we have two generations, primary generations on the commission. We have folk who lived through it, and we have people who are of this generation who don't intend to live through it anymore. That's a tough tension to stand in between as chair, because I'm listening to both ends. And I want you to know that the commissioners, for the most part, have stood firm in their commitment to improve this community. They've worked hard. We asked them to come to one commission meeting a month, but what I find is that the IFAs are meeting two and three times a month. And so you're talking about folk who are by far the majority of the commissioners going to a meeting every week to deal with reparations in a way that makes sense for not just what they understand, for their neighborhoods, but for the community that they're forming.
I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Mullen. And I'd like to say, I'd like to thank all the reparations committee members who've put in so much hard work to get where we are now. The one thing I noticed that you spoke of, one of the first things, was basically outreach into the community. I know that you published a list of the recommendations from the reparations committee, but I'm just wondering, that outreach part which is missing, what is the timeframe you would say it would take for you to actually engage with the community? What does that look like? Or have you actually looked at the timeframe for that?
Hi, Donwana Little, Vice Chair of the Reparations Commission. So what we've been looking at is, last month, the month before last, we actually got the report from city and county on the level of community engagement they've been doing. But yet to say, it's insufficient as far as reaching black people. This is reparations. And so we wanted to be more intentional, so I've worked with the RJC and talked to other organizations who would love to partner with this process and with the RJC to bring it all together to be able to reach the greater community. When you ask for a timeline of what that looks like, anybody who has done community engagement, especially in Asheville, in Buckland County. Buckland County is vast, and there's a lot of pockets throughout the county that has where people who were originally residents of Asheville and no longer could afford to live here. And so when we think about a timeline, that looks like anywhere, I guess that'd be based on the number we say of how many people are we looking to engage as a commission. Looking at the statistics of black people in the city and the county, understanding that it has drastically reduced, but understanding that a lot of people like my generation didn't even come back to Asheville after graduation, but they were still impacted by this work, by the harms of Asheville and the system in the Buckland County. So it's like, what does that look like? We've been drafting, and I'm sure if y'all looked at our materials, y'all seen that we have worked with RJC to come up with a proposed community engagement initiative.
Like you said, you're waiting for RJC to come back with some type of recommendation. But if you were able to start doing that outreach, and say, for instance, you were able to do it quicker, you know, because it's more efficient, you had a more efficient way of actually reaching, so that would sort of cut down the timeline. So tell me something about, depending on how that goes, can you actually maybe, we'll work with the extension, but you come back and give us updates as to what you've actually accomplished within that period? Say, for instance, come back in April, let us know where you are, and that way we can decide if we will, you know, decide to give you more time, sort of like with Buckland County. Would something like that work? That way we can make sure that things are progressing in the way, you know, that they should be?
Or do you need to meet while that outreach is being done?
Yeah.
So the, one of the things about the proposal that we submit around community engagement, community engagement is a big topic for our reparations commission, because we are talking about, we got 25 people seated at the table, but we're representing thousands of black people in Asheville and Buckland County. So that's a heavy weight. And then we are in community, so we go to community. We are the ones whose reputations and whose voice and whose faces are being seen on the ground, right? So with that being said, yes, we definitely, we would love to come back with updates and as we refine the community engagement proposal down to those, I think it's three months. What, we have refined it down to three months, and I'm actually working directly with them and some other organizations. What we are doing is like being intentional, what has worked for each one of these organizations? How are they connecting with the black community? Because we are not, one organization can't do it alone. One group can't be expected to engage that massive amount of people.
You did say Buckland County had did outreach, so what did that look like?
A summit. They did a presentation. It was a summit. They have a youth group that did a video, and I think it was a combined community engagement thing with the city, and I think the city's neighborhood group and the email server had a couple of thousand people on it. I guess that sums it up.
I think my question is, once we get to a place where we have firm recommendations with the advisement from the individuals doing the audit, once we get to that finished product, I would say, why does it require the commission to meet regularly while community engagement is going on? Why don't we get to the product, which is the recommendations, then we take a pause while the community engagement is going on? And if we...
Hi, DeWanna Little, Vice Chair of the Reparations Commission. So what we've been looking at is last month, the month before last, we actually got the report from city and county on the level of community engagement they've been doing. But yet to say, it's insufficient as far as reaching black people. This is reparations. And so we wanted to be more intentional. So I've worked with the RJC and talked to other organizations who would love to partner with this process and with the RJC to bring it all together to be able to reach the greater community. When you ask for a timeline of what that looks like, anybody who has done community engagement, especially in Asheville, in Buckland County, Buckland County is vast and there's a lot of pockets throughout the county that has, were people who were originally residents of Asheville and no longer could afford to live here. And so when we think about a timeline, that looks like anywhere, I guess that'd be based on the number we say of how many people are we looking to engage as a commission. Looking at the statistics of black people in the city and the county, understanding that it has drastically reduced, but understanding that a lot of people like my generation didn't even come back to Asheville after graduation, but they were still impacted by this work, by the harms of Asheville and the system in the Buckland County. So it's like, what does that look like? We've been drafting, and I'm sure if y'all looked at our materials, y'all seen that we have worked with RJC to come up with a proposed community engagement initiative.
Like you said, you're waiting for RJC to come back with some type of recommendation. But if you were able to start doing that outreach and say, for instance, you were able to do it quicker, you know, because it's more efficient, you had a more efficient way of actually reaching, so that would sort of cut down the timeline. So tell me something about depending on how that goes, can you actually maybe, we'll work with the extension, but you come back and give us updates as to what you've actually accomplished within that period? Say, for instance, come back in April, let us know where you are and that way we can decide if we will, you know, decide to give you more time, sort of like with Buckland County. Would something like that work? That way we can make sure that things are progressing in the way, you know, that they should be.
Do you need to meet while that outreach is being done?
So the, one of the things about the proposal that we submit around community engagement, community engagement is a big, a big topic for our reparations commission because we are talking about, we got 25 people seated at the table, but we representing thousands of black people in Asheville and Buckland County. So that's, that's a heavy weight. And then we are in community, so we go to community. We are the ones whose reputations and whose voice and whose faces are being seen on the ground, right? So with that being said, yes, we definitely, we would love to come back with updates and as we refine the, the community engagement proposal down to those, to, I think it's three months. What, we have refined it down to three months and I'm actually working directly with them and some other organizations. What we are doing is like being intentional, what has worked for each one of these organizations? How are they connecting with the black community? Because we are not, one organization can't do it alone. One group can't be expected to engage that massive amount of people.
You did say Buckland County had did outreach, so what did that look like?
A summit, they did a presentation, it was a summit, they have a youth group that did a video, and I think it was a combined community engagement thing with the city. And I think the city's neighborhood group and the email server had a couple of thousand people on it. I guess that sums it up.
I think my question is, once we get to a place where we have firm recommendations with the advisement from the individuals doing the audit, once we get to that finished product, I would say, why does it require the commissions, commission to meet regularly while community engagement is going on? Why don't we get to the product, which is the recommendations, then we take a pause while the community engagement is going on? And if we need to reconvene, then we reconvene. But I don't, I don't hear the need for ongoing meetings if the focus after recommendations is just to get the word out to community.
So our recommendations are trashed, right? And so at this point, it has been very limited community engagement around our recommendations. I really want to be intentional about that. So we expect the recommendations, those groups that were able to do some form of community engagement, it shifted their recommendations, which took time after the community engagement to meet, to make those changes and really account for the input of community. You know what I mean? And so like outside of this and the way we set in up community engagement, and so every commission, every commissioner just about works, got families and all of the things, that's time, right? And so to be considerate of everyone's time and energy, because we've got a lot of talented people at the table, to be considerate of their time and energy, we have made it to where the, the way is drafted, where all commission members don't have to be there, a representative from each IFA, you know what I mean? So we not overtaxing people's time and we can keep the work moving, making the adjustments as needed, getting additional input if they feel like, okay, we got this recommendation, we almost to that final, like keeping the community engaged throughout this process. Because like from my understanding, it was supposed to be a community inclusive type of process with community actually helping us to build these recommendations. At least that's what we were tasked with in our contract.
What happens if you do a bunch of community engagement and the community still doesn't show up?
Like I highly doubt it. You know, like that's because I'm in community and they showing up, like they show up for the things that, that they want to show up for and it's how you engage. And if I'm, can't go to a store without being stopped by different community, community members wondering, what was this that was said? What did that mean? That's actually paying attention online. Even if they're not showing up at the, our regular meetings, they actually showing up online. And it's too much community behind us willing to support this outreach and this engagement for it to fail.
I think, I think another way of thinking about it is rather than thinking about doing community engagement, community education engagement, and then proceeding with the recommendations, that there's overlap and that actually the monitoring of our progress with community engagement is actually a monitoring of the implementation of the programs and processes we're talking about changing and whether or not they're working, particularly in light of the, just overt failures in the past.
I just see a staggered process, like once you get the, a recommendation to the point where you can shop with community, then we take a pause in meeting. Because as DeWanna pointed out, staff time is involved and commissioners' time is very valuable as well. So you go out and shop that idea with the community, get their feedback, and then once you get enough feedback, then you reconvene the commission to see what you came up with and if you can build on the feedback from community. Does that make sense?
It does. And let me take you one more step, is that there's a great deal of skepticism on whether or not the city and county will actually follow forth with the positive influence, implementation of it. And so having someone, having a body in place to respond and to monitor and to look at the implementation of the, of the recommendations, I think becomes a very legitimating voice for the city and for the county. It's, it's hard to believe that after my just short time working with education for the last 40 years, that over the course of one year, end of grade and end of course exam results will suddenly be addressed. That, that's a hard one to swallow. And so the idea of having commissioners who have worked on the IFA for education, or at least one or two, to continue in the form of a more or less permanent body, makes much more sense to me. So those conversations are ongoing right now. There's a proposal before the commission, you know, to address exactly this.
Is there a recommended path forward? From the commission itself or from?
From staff.
There was one, was there?
Staff has suggested that we would extend the process until June, consistent with what the county is recommending. And at that point in time, if we need to extend, we will consider extending the time.
Councilwoman.
I mean, there's not, there's not even a, you all didn't even approve a timeline.
Well, and I, and I think what I hear Dr. Mullen saying is, even when the commission's done with community outreach and even when the recommendations are finalized, then what is the sort of oversight model look like for, for the carrying out of the recommendations? And, and so unfortunately, I don't think tonight we have time to flesh that out, but I hear what you're saying. And, and we don't have, you know, lots of other cities that have done this and have the perfect model that we just need to copy to, to do it. We're kind of making this up as we go, you know? For example, I'm very, I'm familiar with Evanston's plan and they have this very singular recommendation and it was to provide grants for housing purchases for homeownership for people affected by urban renewal. And so, you know, they had a funding, they had a policy of how it would be carried out, they had a plan for who would carry it out. And so it was a matter of just looking to see. Here, we're, you know, these are wide ranging recommendations. Many don't have anything to do with the city even in terms of healthcare, education and things like that. So I think that's kind of a broader question of what does it look like to, to have some type of oversight to ensure that these recommendations happen? And, and maybe the commission itself will, will provide us with its thoughts about what, what the recommendation would be there for how to do that.
I guess, I guess for me, I was thinking that even though they have the recommendations, because they have not actually completed the community outreach, I think that's probably going to dictate what stays as far as the recommendation and what goes. So that's the reason I was concerned.
And they might change based on that.
Yeah, depending on, depending on the, that's right, the outreach in the community, what they find is important. So a lot of those recommendations will change. So that's where I want to get to, the meat and potatoes, so we'll know exactly what we're dealing with. As far as the timeframe, and the reason why the timeframe is so important, we just don't want to keep dragging this out where people are getting tired and bored. We want to be able to capture people's attention while we can and start showing some type of, some type of, what do you call it, progress? You know, because unfortunately, people are getting, you know, tired. So that's the reason we're really concerned about trying to maybe get the timeline moving in a way that we can actually have the community engage with the progress that the project is actually making.
I have a curiosity about the budget, but I also just wanted to say thank you for the recommendation to be here tonight. To be able to hear from you directly is such a, an honor and it really adds to my understanding. So thank you to you and also other members of the reparations commission that are in the audience. As an educator, I know that there's like a spark of energy, right? When you get the classroom together. And if you said, I'll see you at the end of the semester, you're going to get an A on your grade, it would be pretty wild to imagine that that kind of spark of energy would continue without meeting together regularly. And so I, I do see that spark of energy from regular meetings together through these challenging conversations. And when I hear the recommendation to continue, to support it, which I do, is to say that I support this as a symbol of also supporting the challenging recommendations that are coming up next. That said, thanks to staff for, for providing this budget, we now have an analysis of the funds that have been contributed and the expenses that have been allocated. And I guess my concern and curiosity is when we, starting with the funds from the sale of White Labs, when we were making allocations to the reparations funds, I imagined that those would be allocated to addressing the disparities in the social determinants of health, not in meeting costs. And so now moving forward, if we hear your recommendation, support it moving forward, is the imagine, that, the imagination that we would continue to pull from the fund to hold the meetings or that we would find a different fund for supporting the work of the reparations commission and reserve the funds for doing the work?
Yeah, this, this, she's letting me answer this, right? But the idea of, of the budget itself, the budget pieces you saw were the first budgets I ever saw. And so the idea of where the money was going and the degree to which it was going towards program and operations versus implementation of the, of the policies was, I had no idea. On the other hand, on the other hand, bringing us together, it looks frivolous. I know it does, I know it must look like, to eat at the, at the city, to chat, to talk. Those processes have never occurred within this community. And, and it's, it's like I see legacy communities in various stages of presence as they disappear right before our eyes. But I'm looking at legacy community, neighborhoods become the black community. To talk about the black community, you always have to talk about East, Shiloh, et cetera. But what I'm saying now is more of a comprehensive conversation take place. So those program expenses, I think have been well spent for ones that I know about. But I, I'm convinced that, I'm also convinced that the sources of them, we might find another for the running of the meetings. And just as my initial response to it is that as we dug into it, the city and the county are responsible for a number of the policies that affected the five areas that we're looking at. The big gaping area are the private sector. The private sector was primarily responsible for implementing segregation in the city. It was undone at the rubic of city and county law, but the point, the point being is that those were local merchants, those, those were local downtowners. Those were people who were attached to the private sector economy that had no governmental authority, but participated in the enforcement of governmental policies. And I think that a way of talking about bringing that big giant gaping absence to the table is to talk about what role can you play now? You played a role in taking us apart. What role can you play in bringing us together? That's a hard conversation and I've tried to have it and I've been ignored. So maybe you all have the authority, I certainly don't.
Well, I'm hearing that the regular meetings is an opportunity to build community and to continue to have a conversation that was maybe having gaps before. So thank you to the members that are here and maybe watching at home or not yet named, there's numerous, and I appreciate the time that goes into building those relationships.
Thank you all so much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. We are still under presentations and reports. We have, we are not, council, we're not going to hear the presentation of fiscal year 2023 annual report, but we are going to hear the rec, the recognition of Brenda Mills. Who is, where's Brenda Mills?
She's right there. So Mayor, I'm going to have Rachel Wood, Assistant City Manager, actually do the presentation in recognition of Brenda Mills. But I just wanted to just open with just deep gratitude for all the work that she has done. You all know that she is getting ready to retire. The presentation that you just heard regarding reparations, about 98% of that work has been Brenda Mills. And we're just so, so appreciative amongst all the other work that she does as Director of Equity and Inclusion Department. I'm going to turn it over now to Rachel, to recognize her, but I just wanted her to know that we are and we're going to miss you terribly. And obviously, these other organizations recognize your impeccable and dedicated work.
Thank you, Deborah, and really appreciate you giving me the honor of being able to recognize Brenda today. You all know I'm passionate about the annual report and strategic planning and I can only think of one thing I'd rather present on, and that is recognizing the wonderful Brenda Mills for her contributions to the community as well as the profession. So we've got a trend going where we've had multiple recognitions of Brenda Mills for her service to the community as well as several professional organizations. We've got two more awards this evening that we are recognizing Brenda for. Those include the Robert E. Shepherd Excellence in Local Government Award, which is going to be, which has been awarded by the Land of Sky Regional Council, as well as the North Carolina Minority Women Business Enterprise Coordinator Network's Standing on the Shoulders of Giants Award. So a couple of quick reminders about Brenda. Brenda has been and continues to be an invaluable professional resource for the city of Asheville where she has served with us for 18 years and she has 33 total years of experience working in local government. Brenda joined the city of Asheville in 2005 and has had, I think, more titles than anyone else in the city of Asheville, including Minority Business Program Manager, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Program Manager, Administrative Services Manager, Economic Development Specialist, Neighborhood and Community Engagement Specialist, and she currently serves as our Director of Equity and Inclusion. So we've actually got Nathan Ramsey with the Land of Sky this evening. So Nathan, I'm not sure if you want to recognize Brenda for the award that she received from your agency. I don't want to put you on the spot or I'm happy to read about it, either way, whichever your preference is.
He's a former elected official, of course he wants to. He knows the microphone. Come on up, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Mayor, Vice Mayor Kilgore, Council. It's my honor to be here to recognize Brenda Mills. I've known Brenda for over 20 years and she is the consummate local government professional. Brenda can get along with anyone and, but she will tell you what she thinks. And that's a great tribute to her Land of Sky Regional Council, awarded Brenda with the Robert E. Shepherd Excellence in Local Government Award. That award is given in the discretion of the council to a local government professional who upholds the ideals of professionalism and service of Bob Shepherd. I don't know how many of you know Bob Shepherd, but he's a legend in our area and really across the state for his, his focus on, on local governance. So Brenda is a renaissance woman. Either that, I told her either that or she just does jobs that no one else wants to do. But, but I think she really is someone that none of us are irreplaceable, except for y'all. But, you know, Brenda is really irreplaceable and, you know, it's going to be a great loss for the city of Asheville and our region that she is no longer serving in local government, but she assures us she will not leave our community and she'll still be here contributing to our community. She served on the Land of Sky Regional Council Board for many years, for which we're eternally grateful. And Mayor, I'll end my remarks, I apologize if I went over time.
No, absolutely not.
Thank you. So the second award that we want to recognize Brenda for is the North Carolina Minority Women Business Enterprise Network Standing on the Shoulders of Giants Award. Brenda was honored with this award at the recent conference and it's presented to individuals who've demonstrated unwavering commitment and outstanding achievements in creating economic opportunities for minority firms. So we, as the city manager's office, sincerely appreciate the continued exceptional work and Brenda is definitely not coasting into retirement. She still has a number of items, as was evidenced by our recent Equity and Engagement Committee meeting, that she has underway in addition to her continued support of reparations. And so Brenda, we appreciate you, if you want to stand up for a moment, we appreciate you for the tireless work that you've continued to contribute to the community and over the course of your public career. And that concludes the presentation.
You know, I always have to say something funny. When I got the email from Nathan, it said, congratulations, and I was like, where am I going? But we got a nice lunch, I got to see a lot of cool people. Shannon Tuck was there to give an award to Jerry V. Hahn. I think we found out Ken Putnam is one year longer than Jerry in public service in 50 years. I will not be in 50 years of public service. But the other award, Standing on the Shoulders of Giants, they kept texting me and asking me, could I come to a lunch? Where to a lunch? You're having a conference, I don't do that work anymore. Charlotte, no. I have to be interviewed and have all this other stuff to do. So finally, the president called and said, we're giving you an award. So we're, we're sorry, we were trying to make it a surprise. I don't like surprises. So I really appreciate that. When I joined that, I was a mere 32 years old and I was one of the young people with all the older folks. And, you know, humans don't do intergenerational very well. These folks have moved forward, taken on the mantle and kept it going and made business inclusion very relevant. So I'm excited. So I'm excited to be honored by them, because now I'm one of the old people. So, thank you very much.
All right, that concludes the, this report and presentations, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, we have three public hearings on our public hearings agenda tonight. The first is a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way between Sulphur Springs Road and Lane Avenue. And Jessica Morris is racing in here to do this one. She's like behind.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Jessica Morris, Assistant, excuse me, Assistant Director of Transportation. Um, I have a presentation for you guys this evening about a right-of-way closure. And this is located generally between Sulphur Springs Road and Lane Avenue. Um, Jeremy Cohen is the property owner of one sixty Sulphur Springs and is the applicant for this requested closure. The, um, the closure, and I'll show you a map, runs roughly north-south between Sulphur Springs Road and Lane Avenue, and it, um, bisects these four properties, one fifty-eight and one sixty Sulphur Springs, and seventeen and twenty-three Lane Avenue. The right-of-way would be divided among the four properties, and a new plot would be filed if the right-of-way closure is approved. And, uh, just to note that all adjacent property owners have signed affidavits of approval. Um, so the, the applicant has indicated that the purpose of this right-of-way closure request is to facilitate construction of additional residential units to the rear of, of his property. Um, there has not been a application submitted yet to Development Services. So at this time, um, we, the city staff does not know the intended number of units, the size, the type, et cetera. And state law governs the, the right-of-way closure process and, um, does not require an applicant to provide the city with a development plan or, or really any information associated with the closure request. Um, we, we do ask for that, um, and so if, if we do get information, it's voluntary. And, um, when we do get that information, um, we, we process those, those applications simultaneously. So the orange line represents the right-of-way that would be closed. The red star is the applicant, and that's at one sixty Sulphur Springs Road. And here's kind of what that looks like with the parcel lines. So, um, the staff level review, which is the technical review committee, met in July and determined that there were no utility conflicts present, that there, um, trans, from a transportation perspective, there are topography issues as well as, um, parallel roadways that basically provide the same access that this, this right-of-way could. So from a staff perspective, maintaining this right-of-way, um, and, and keeping it open would not serve a transportation purpose. And just to give a little bit more context about the vicinity and what that connectivity looks like and what, what we look at when we're looking at these right-of-way closures, um, you can see that it, it does provide, it, it would provide a connection between Sulphur Springs and Lane Avenue, but Clinton Avenue are already provides that. And, um, it doesn't, it's very unlikely that Lane Avenue or Inglewood Avenue that are running more like east-west, that there would ever be a connection over to the west because of, of the creek that's, that sits there to the west. So from a connectivity standpoint, we don't really see this being much of an opportunity or, or having much of a, um, providing much of a benefit. And the green, kind of neon-green lines show you where there are existing sidewalks that, um, are on Sulphur Springs Road and connecting to the elementary school to the east. Um, the, this is Sulphur Springs Road. This is looking towards the elementary school looking east, and the sidewalk there is there on the right-hand side of the roadway. The kind of gravel drive behind the speed limit twenty, uh, sign, that is roughly where this right-of-way is. Um, so one other thing that was kind of different about this one, um, as part of the TRC review, there, it, it came to our attention that there was a retaining wall that was constructed, not on the property of the applicant, but on one of the other properties that abuts this right-of-way at twenty-three Lane Avenue. Um, the, there was a stop work order associated with this, with this retaining wall, but because that wall had been built by that property owner, within this unopened right-of-way, uh, Development Services couldn't permit it at that time because it was not in the property. So if this right-of-way closure was to be approved, it would also be bringing that wall into compliance, and therefore Development Services could issue a permit for it. So, and just some more context photos. This is, um, looking south from Sulphur Springs Road in the general vicinity of the right-of-way. And this is the other side, um, looking north, and that is the retaining wall that I was just talking about. And here's another, another picture of that. So ultimately, um, staff, TRC recommended that the closure request should be approved and forwarded to the Multimodal Transportation Commission. And the Multimodal Commission reviewed the request in August, and there was a lot of discussion about this. Um, and ultimately, the commission did not recommend approval. Um, the primary reasons for that were concerns about the retaining wall. And, um, and then overall, I think their, their concern was wanting to have a bigger picture understanding of these right-of-ways. And, um, where they are, are there opportunities for connectivity? Um, and, and trying to get a more holistic picture. So they also didn't really feel comfortable approving this without having that greater context. Um, but ul- ultimately, you know, the applicant still has the right to move forward. Um, so that's why we're here this evening. And, um, we, you know, at that time in Multimodal, we did, did mention the fact that the right-of-way, um, closure would allow this wall to become compliant and for there to be a permit. We also talked about the, um, the work program and how trying to take a comprehensive review of all of these unopened rights-of-way would very likely be a very extensive process. There are, I would guess, thousands of them. Um, and so it's not something that's in our current work program. Um, I wish it was something that we could do, but unfortunately, it's, at this time, it's kind of a, we look at, we look at the, the request, and then we look in that general vicinity of that request and see if there are any opportunities. But to do like a citywide analysis would be a pretty significant effort.
I, I would echo that, because I have, I've actually had to do, and I think you had this question. I've actually had to do sort of forensic title searches on property just to determine if one paper alley is owned by anyone. It can take hours just to do one of them, so I, I wouldn't. Unless we just wanted to have some sort of academic exercise that we threw money at, otherwise I don't know that we would.
Well, it came up in PED again, um, for this reason, what Multimodal pointed out. You know, is this an opportunity across the city for infill? But it sounds, I understand the chaos wrapped around.
It's such a case-by-case basis. I mean, because some, anyway. It's so, it depend, it totally depends on how the developer platted it in nineteen twenty-three or whenever they did it.
Eighteen seventy, yeah. Maybe it's a good, like, UNCA research project or something.
Well, and it's a good thing there's a state law that resolves this, because technically, I think the land is owned by whoever originally, that's my, that's my opinion. That it's owned by whoever originally platted it, so that's a whole complicating.
Add some from just sitting on the Multimodal for many years and then now is the liaison. I think, um, I think that they are routinely getting right-of-way closures and going, "How do you want me to assess this?"
Right.
The context of like larger government purpose or policy direction. It's like they can look and say, "Does this connect to a map for Multimodal or not?" But, um, I, I think that they're asking, I think that idea is interesting to look at all the paper roads, see is there a middle missing housing play, see if there's a connection to, um, our transportation network. Staff is saying that's a really exhaustive exercise, and so that's fine too. But I encourage us to listen beyond to their suggestion. A mentor once told me, "When your client tells you you're wrong, they're always right. And when your client tells you what to do, they're always wrong." And I don't know if that's true, but my, what I'm saying here is I think Multimodal is saying, "What is the purpose of our right-of-way process?" It's very regulated, but they feel a little lost in what our ask of them is when we're having them review them. So outside of the specific recommendation, I think we can ask Multimodal to look a little further. What, what do we want out of these? Because I, I think they feel a little rudderless.
Well, then I would ask, I, I don't recall the origins of why we asked Multimodal to look at these, because I do think you point out a point of conflict. The statute's very finite and only allows a very narrow review, yet we're giving it to Multimodal and saying, "Think about all the uses." And so, so then it may be that that inherently has a conflict in terms of what their scope of review is versus what the statute allows them to consider. So I, I'm trying to remember when we began that process. It was several years ago.
Well, I was on the Multimodal when we started that process, and I remember hearing from fellow members of the Multimodal that it was a benefit to take it to Multimodal because there was an intention at some point that there might be a road or a greenway or an open space. And so it gives them another layer of check before we just move forward and treat every right-of-way the same way.
So, so I'm assuming they're told, though, that with that, there, there are somewhat statutorily confined in terms of their review.
Their lens, their lens is even, is meant to be even less than your lens, but your lens is also very restrained within the state law as well. And it's, it's essentially limited to disclosing this right-of-way prohibit, end up prohibiting someone's access to their lot. And does it cause a detriment to the public interest? Not a benefit, but a detriment. And so that's where it gets tricky. So our process is, is meant to determine that, if there's a detriment. And so, you know, we can't, we are not supposed to look at what the associated development project might be or, you know, judge any of the merits of the reason why, and which can be frustrating to everybody, because it's like you have to have this very narrow lens. Um, but Multimodal, I mean, I mean, one of the big things is we are looking at this to say, "Is there a transportation opportunity?" Even if it's not a road, is it, is it, could be a, a greenway or a natural surface trail. And so that's a, that's the main reason why it got moved to transportation as well, because I think that's the big, the big opportunity that could, that could happen. But every, I think every single, um, application that I've processed in the last few years is associated with some kind of development. Like, it, it might just be a single-family home, but there's also ones that have come before you that have been for large-scale, um, apartment buildings, so.
I was just wondering, could you clarify something for me, Jessica? Basically, you're saying when they close those right-of-ways, I was under the impression that basically, that if they did approve it, then each, uh, lot would inherit, you know, half of that particular property. And, and with that being said, I noticed that in the report, you did say that people that were impacted or affected by this were, were actually reached out to, you know, had outreach. And I was just wondering, what did you hear back from them? Was everybody pretty much in agreement with this, or?
So this is actually, um, this is part of the application. So the applicant has to get signed affidavits from each of the abutting property owners and provide that to the city with the application. So we personally don't speak to those property owners, but we receive those signed, um, affidavits saying that there's support. And, and state law doesn't say that the area has to be split in half. It, it, it's silent on that. I think that's the standard, that people just kind of split it down the middle. But it could be that those property owners get together and make another agreement and say, "Well, this person's going to get all of it, not because I don't want it." That, so that's an option for property owners, but that's up to them. Yeah, yeah. So they, this becomes private property and, um.
It looks like there's homes on, on each of the four lots affected, and so they'll gain, they'll gain a little more side yard. Yeah, I mean, it could change their setbacks or something and allow a broader use of their lots.
Well, what about the upcoming flag lots? That's what I see.
But how do you do a flat? Oh, you mean because it would give you the access room?
Yeah, I mean, I walked, I walked the property with the applicant, and they're looking at infill.
I think we probably have to change our, the width of our access to make it work. I'm just eyeballing this.
Yeah, Thursday, I asked about.
It's coming in like a month. I just wonder if they're banking on this, because I did actually hear from them, and I didn't have a chance to talk to them. They just reached out over email, and it sounded, there was a housing reason, so.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. And I'll say, like, some of the conceptual things we're talking about of this policy, I think is why Multimodal didn't vote in favor of that, of this proposal, is they're conceptually grappling with it, and it was a very good discussion. So with that said, I, I think it's a good proposal. If folks, like, I could make a motion, but, yeah, more questions are fair too.
First, let me just say this. I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak, so please, with your motion.
Motion to adopt a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way between Sulphur Springs Road and Lane Avenue.
Sandra, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, the next item on our public hearing agenda, thank you, Jessica. The next item on our public hearing agenda, I need a motion to recuse me. Um, does someone so move?
I make a motion to recuse the mayor.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and if you'll call me back before you get into the next item.
Okay. The next item on our agenda will be presentation by Clay Mitchell. And, uh, so, and basically, it will be to, for the continuation of consideration to the conditional, uh, resulting of Two Butler Road from Community Business Two District Two Residential Expansion, conditional zoning. Okay, thank you, Clay.
Vice Mayor, councilors, I realize you've had a long day already, so I will be brief. Um, we discussed this last month, um, and we continue to do it today. This is a site south of Long Shoals Road, just north of Lake, uh, Lake Julian. Uh, you can see the outline of the property in red. It is a conditional zone. The current zoning is Community Business Two. Uh, because of the size of the project and where UDO works, it is going to be residential expansion. Um, it, there is no need for a change in the future land use. Uh, we reviewed this material at the, at the previous meeting. Increased density, uh, encourage responsible growth, infill development, uh, diversity of housing. Uh, we went over the proposed conditions at the time, ten percent affordable at eighty percent AMI, five percent of the total units accepting housing choice vouchers, all compliant with, uh, several of the technical components, which were reviewed by the TRC and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Open space, tree canopy protection, uh, is proposed for final TRC stage, uh, either in fee-in lieu or preservation, depending on the actual construction that takes place on-site. Um, we discussed, uh, several of the, uh, conditions that the applicant was offering related to electric vehicles. Uh, twenty spaces, uh, ready right up at the, at the beginning of construction with twenty additional spaces, uh, pre-wired to allow that expansion based on market conditions and the needs of the residents. Uh, we talked about, uh, the applicant's willingness to upgrade to a shelter, the, the transit stop, pending DOT and city involvement and feasibility. Um, additional parking requirement, or bicycle parking on-site. And then we got into some of the technical modifications. One was five-foot sidewalks internal to the site in lieu of the required ten-foot standard. No bike lanes are proposed into development. Um, and then, uh, the applicant has requested modification to increase the density to thirty-two units per acre, where twenty are required. Um, we did, uh, helped you through an analysis of the surrounding zoning and some of the densities just to give you a perspective of what our zoning requires out there. There's a lot of different zones in this particular area. Um, and we showed you how some places it's, it's greater density is allowed, other places there are lower, and this one. And this one kind of rests right in the middle of all of that. It was approved by the Technical Review Committee back in August. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to recommend, but that motion failed on a three-to-three tie vote. And then you heard this last month. We feel that it is technically compliant with the comprehensive plan goals related to responsible growth, increasing diversity of the housing supply. And the concept, discussed in the comprehensive plan about this evolution of neighborhoods. And in this area, there's some very dense housing to the, to the north of the site and the entire roadway is seeing an increasing in a flow, that evolution of neighborhood and densities. At the, at the last meeting, we also discussed renewable energy considerations and some of the work that we've done with the applicants. I've already talked about the EV charging. And here's where I have to acknowledge the fact that I made a mistake at the last meeting, talking about the renewable energy incentives. This is a project that enjoys an interesting adder to the tax credit. Because of its location near a retired coal plant, it gets an automatic increase in its tax credit by 10%. That is only for businesses. It is not for homeowners. And that was a mistake I made in response to one of the questions. It is, however, if the project can meet the domestic content requirements, which includes steel and manufactured, they can actually get a tax credit up to 50%. And then as a business, they can also depreciate the cost of that system. In response to one of the questions, it does include qualified energy storage. This application, this project doesn't propose it. But since I was dispensing erroneous information to the public, I thought I would help and add that. So if you are a homeowner, you can get the 30% base credit, but you cannot get the adders for domestic content or being located in an energy community. However, if you are a homeowner and you're doing solar and storage, both of those pieces of equipment are eligible for the 30% tax credit. I apologize. This is the slide I wanted to get to. These are the changes in the project conditions that have happened since our November meeting. The applicant has proposed a condition to install a minimum of 30 total panels with the suggested size on the site at the optimal locations along the garage buildings on the southern portion of the site plan. So this would be added as a condition to the conditional zoning. They have also quantified the unit count, particularly the three-bedroom units. And the applicant has proposed that they will provide a minimum of 14 three-bedroom units. One other, I can't remember if I made this clarification at the last one, but through the process, the applicant was able to negotiate a full-access road off the commercial property to the west. So now there are two full-access roads. The interesting benefit of the secondary access road is that is a signalized intersection that now has a crosswalk on it. The plot-place intersection is not signalized and it does not have a crosswalk. So now drivers will have an access to a signalized intersection if they choose to turn left. In consideration of the alternative transportation or bicycle, the applicant has proposed signage near the entry points, alerting entrance to the facility that this is a bicycle-friendly facility and that they are going to make sure that all the storm drains and other infrastructure will be safe for people who are on bikes throughout the site if they're going up to the sidewalks and getting to that transportation stop or trying somehow to get to other nearby areas where that they can ride. So they anticipate riders potentially on the site and making sure that people who are on the site are protected with the signage and that infrastructure. We went through our recommendations and our comments. We respect the deep need for diversity of housing types. We watched and listened very carefully to the discussion you had about not only affordability, levels of affordability, housing choice vouchers, the nature of the types of units. And we feel that with the additional changes to the conditions, there's been a pretty substantial response to that. And so our recommendation hasn't changed. But my slide projector has. And we feel that approval of this conditional zoning based on those things is technically warranted. Any questions?
I have just an update that I sent, between our two meetings about this, and thank you for the updates. And you always add to my understanding about what's possible for the future of renewable energy in our community. So thank you for some clarifying information there. Between our two meetings, I took the bus to this location. And this isn't about the development. This is about the city of Asheville. Right now, the S6 serves Gerber Road, it serves Peachtree Road, it serves Long Shoals Road, it stops at Lenamar. It serves Gerber Village. And it comes every 90 minutes, which means it's really hard to rely on using the bus if you live in this new neighborhood. So that's on us. And I just wanted to relift up that Transit Can't Wait, South Asheville. We did commit to increasing South Asheville service and we weren't able to follow up because we didn't have enough drivers and we didn't have enough buses. So I believe that this is another reason why we need more South Asheville service.
I'll jump into that, you know, I think I was able to sit down and talk with the project applicant. I think that you've been working to try and evolve as far as you could take it. We talked extensively about what it takes to get solar panels and I'm pleased to see that y'all are doing that. I think I brought up last time, you know, and I think we keep having this conversation of what are our rules, what are our incentives, what's the community we want for affordable housing and what's the role of the private sector. And I think that adding the 14, the 14 three-bedroom units was really responsive to our conversation last time and really rolling up our sleeves together and talking through solar together to actually, not just say it, but to actually put it on the application. I'm pleased with that. I'm excited for that. I'd love more, always. But more is, but this is, I feel that y'all were, that you listened, and so I appreciate that.
Okay, I don't think we have anybody signed up for public comment. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, pardon me, just, Vice Mayor, just so for the record, could you actually open and close that public hearing?
Okay, yep. Like to, open and close, okay.
Okay. With that, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at Two Butler Road from Community Business Two, CB Two, to Residential Expansion Conditional Zone, Res EXP-CZ. And find that the request is in the public interest. The project is aligned with the comprehensive plan goals number 13 and 14 that calls for increased diversity in housing opportunities and increased availability in affordable housing and aligns with Council's FY 24 Strategic Priority Area for Equitable and Affordable Housing.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
That was a nay for Sage.
Just one nay.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our public hearing agenda is Item C 115 Fairview Road. This has two parts, and Sasha Vertenski will take us through it, or at least the first part.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. I am Sasha Vertenski with the Community Economic Development Department to present this land use incentive grant request for 115 Fairview Road. First, a few key takeaways. This is a 281-unit apartment complex. 20% of the units, 57 or 57 apartments, will be affordable for households at 80% AMI for 20 years. And half of those affordable units will be set aside for voucher holders. The project qualifies for 16 years of taxes paid and the developers requesting a 21-year grant due to additional construction expense and the locations. Concerns were raised at Housing and Community Development Committee around who benefits from the Luigi-funded units. And the Luigi policy will be evaluated through our Affordable Housing Plan process using Thrive's report and other considerations and data. Based on the current Luigi policy, staff is recommending a $4.56 million grant to spread over a period of 18 years. A little bit more background on this project. It is an all-residential project. It's on 8.25 acres just outside of Biltmore Village on the site of where the screen door is today. The developer's estimating a taxable value after construction of around $80 million. And we have the construction cost and the estimated project cost here as well. This is the unit breakdown that's being proposed. You can see the affordable units, the market rate units and the totals. So the majority of the units are studios and one-bedroom units. And this is the project location. And this is a rendering from Fairview Road. And so just briefly, here's the point summary. 20% of the units being affordable, add or below 80% AMI for 20 years is the baseline to get into this program. And that gets you 20 points. And so that's equivalent to four years of taxes paid. There's another 10 points for 10% of the total units accepting rental assistance. They are proposing to house someone from the homeless-by-name list. Locational efficiency, they're within a half-mile of a transportation amenity and a mile from a job center. This is fairly close to mission hospitals. For energy efficiency, this is both Energy Star and Green Building Certification combined for 15 points. Universal design in 20% of the units for 10 points. And building in a non-qualified census tract for another 10 points. So that gets us to 80 points or a 16-year grant. They are requesting an additional 15 points for locational efficiency because there's multiple bus lines near their location and convenience stores. And they're within a couple, you know, within somewhat walking distance of a couple of schools. Our policy does not provide for adding points for multiple transportation amenities, so staff is not supporting this part of their request. The developers also requesting an additional 10 points due to the presence of asbestos resulting in an additional $0.5 million of cost. And the policy does allow developers to make those requests for additional years due to site-specific barriers or costs. So they're requesting 21 years and staff is recommending a total of 18 years of a total grant in response to the higher site costs. Just really briefly, the Luigi, the parcel today is valued at $1.6 million, which brings in around $6,500 of taxes every year to the city. That continues if the Luigi is approved and the grant is based on the increment of tax value. With the estimated value of close to $80 million, the annual city property tax would be approximately $321,000 or $322,000. And the difference would be $315,500 annually. This exceeds our cap for $80,000 per unit, which is in our policy. The developer's asking for the maximum subsidy of $80,000 per unit. So for 18 years, when you do the math of 57 units times 80,000, you get to this $4.65 million number. So that's, that's what would be spread out over the 18 years. So this project came before the HCD Committee on November 27th. The committee voted one to two on a motion of support, so the motion failed. Concerns were aligned with the Thrive Report and were cited for the no votes. And there's also concern about the need for more deeply affordable housing in the Oakley School District. Policy, Finance and HR Committee reviewed this item this morning and they voted two to one to support the project. So we're going to unpack this a little bit. So this is a little bit longer than a normal Luigi presentation, so I ask you to bear with me. The Luigi program was created to incentivize inclusion of affordable units at 80% AMI in projects that otherwise would have just been market projects. It wasn't designed at the time to produce units for lower-income residents at 50% AMI or less without additional funding layers like vouchers or other sources. Over time, this policy's been revised, slowly increasing the percentage of affordable units we're requiring, the length of the affordability period. So we started out at like 10% of units or 5% of units for 10 years, you know, smaller. And now we're at 20 for 20, 20% of units at 20 years. And then voucher acceptance was also added in as a requirement to help serve those at 60%, and it really should say 50% AMI and below. Because in 2019, the program's point structure was changed to make the longer affordability periods and higher numbers of units feasible. So it used to be 10 points equaled one year, and now it's five points. So it effectively doubled that kind of grant period. And then we saw the volume of Luigi requests increase.
Can I hold you for one second? I think it would be really helpful to folks watching if we could tie actual dollar amounts to the percentage amount. Are you able to do that just off the top of your head?
Like dollar per hour?
No, like 80%. So...
What the rents would be?
Well, not necessarily with the rent, but what the income is for a household. So when we talk about 80% AMI, we're talking about households earning six, around $68,000 per year.
For a family of four?
Yes. Or a household. And then when we talk about 30%, we're talking about households earning around 30,000%. And then 50% corresponds to households earning about $42,500. Just so people, because sometimes people get caught up in, what does 80 mean? But that means for a family of four.
Family of four, yeah.
80%, well, it means a household of four. 80% is 68.
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Thrive Asheville Report. They came to your council, your agenda briefing, they came to HCD in August and then they came to Council about a month ago. They received an ARPA grant of $135,000 mainly for their landlord-tenant partnership program. And a portion of that grant was to study the outcomes of, you know, city tools, land use incentive grant and Housing Trust Fund. So as a part of that study, Thrive looked at census information for the city, including median household incomes by race, household size and voucher data from the Housing Authority. They also looked at city permit data, our, you know, Luigi and Housing Trust Fund data and to see where the city funding has supported affordable units. So I think part of the discussion, or maybe a lot of the discussion around the Thrive Report centers on this graph, maybe, surely not all, but I just wanted to break this down a little bit for you all. So here, on the bottom, we see median incomes broken by race or ethnicity. And these, the most important thing to understand is these are not one household size. So the median income for a black or African-American family, that could be any size. That's not just one particular household size. And then we have this reference line here floating, 80% AMI for a family. And this is from 21, 2021, so the numbers have changed. So an 80% AMI income for, now this is a family of four. So there are kind of two different data sets, if you will, right? So that 80% AMI line is coming from HUD and their income limits that we get every year, every spring. And then the bar charts are from the census. So I think part of, let me, let me see if I have in the next slide. So before I move on, so I think part of what the Thrive Asheville study illuminated for us is that we have groups of folks in the city where their medians are so far below the 80% AMI for a family of four that even if we, and what we don't have, I should say, what we don't have is household size and race and the median incomes all together. We have it from, we can go find it from 2010, but, and I don't know if it's coming from the census, but it was never released. So we just, we don't have that data.
Before we move on from this slide, I mentioned this in the Policy and Finance Committee meeting today. As we're talking about Luigi in general, for me, this is not the only access to information that we have. One access to information, because this is, this week is my ninth year... One access to information, cause this is, this week is my ninth year attending housing-related meetings at the city and the county level. One data set is narrative data. When black and brown families tell me that the affordable housing the city builds is not accessible to them, I believe them. And then the state of Black Asheville documents disparities in income and I believe that. And now we have additional information. So I wonder, it's like, we say equitable affordable housing is our strategic priority. And with gratitude for staff bringing us forward solutions, better tools, I wanna support land use incentive grant as a kind of voluntary rent control. Cause I think our community needs that and expects that of us. But if it's not getting to racial equity, then it's not helping me be responsible for meeting our goals. And that's why I mentioned before this meeting in our Thursday agenda briefing, that I was, I'm landing at a point where I'm having a hard time supporting land use incentive grant in general. And I'm looking forward to hopefully at our retreat, talking about how to make this tool get us to our goals. But until then, I'm responsible for the outcomes. And so that's why I can't support it in general.
Sasha, can I ask you some more questions about what you were just trying to explain? Cause we don't, we're not gonna be able to get this data, right? And this idea that we're updating the Affordable Housing Plan is not gonna include it, I guess is what I'm hearing. The all pieces in one place. Cause this is, what you're doing is highlighting the same kind of confusion and concern I had. Cause I think I'm taking a couple things from the Thrive report. One, I think Kim and I think Antoinette in the past has been right, like we need to update the policy if the outcomes aren't there. But what I'm hearing you say and what I thought I understood from the study was this confusion between the one household size and the four household size. But I'm gonna, I'm meeting with, we're talking with Kate and Thrive on Thursday to see if we can't get additional slides that just show those other household sizes. Cause apparently it's simple to do.
So, if you do that, are you assuming that that will discount the current?
I don't know, cause I feel like there's some missing data, like it isn't, like Sasha just said, we're looking at, we're looking at what we know with four-person household size and then we're saying.
But the disparity is so great that in order for both groups to become on par, you'd have to have a bunch of single black millionaires running around Asheville.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is... One thing I would say, and I don't know if this helps or not. But if we looked at the fifty percent AMI level for a family of four, race is not in, in the mix.
Right.
These lower, these black and or African-American Hispanic or Latino are gonna still be below that.
Right, right. That I get, yes. I guess what threw me is that we kept saying that, I guess it comes down to the basics of what we've been doing with the policies so far. The Housing Trust Fund and the Luigi have all been pointing at the one-bedroom need, the one household size need. So I'm getting a little thrown when we say like, the, the study has shown that our current policies are increasing disparity. I just don't know that I draw that conclusion.
Yes.
But what I wanna draw is, we absolutely, and we've been saying this in meetings for several years now, we need to be building more family-sized units that are deeply affordable. And to me, that study, the study highlights that. But it also highlights that we need to update the policy, which is happening, right, in the spring?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you why it's leaning towards the disparity. So when you have a group of folks so far below what we're targeting and because Luigi is a tax incentive, the current policy hinders our ability to leverage tax dollars for more deeply affordable units.
Or home ownership.
Yes, because Luigi and Housing Trust Funds, two different policies. So Luigi is a tax rebate, a tax incentive. Housing Trust Fund goes for a lower AMI and it's not a rebate, it is a grant. Alone, sorry. Alone, sorry, alone. And I believe in HCD, when we looked, when we did a side-by-side analysis, you said to us that the Housing Trust Fund allowed us to target more deeply affordable. And it was almost like we got more bang for our buck as related to deeply affordable units.
Overall, yeah.
Overall.
Yeah. And I think our next slide is gonna show some of that result.
Yes.
Just to give you a little segue into the rest of the presentation.
And the history of Luigi, Luigi didn't start out literally trying to target that deeply affordable area.
And so then for me, it becomes a philosophical discussion. So then it becomes, do we wanna get larger numbers of affordable apartments for families of four making sixty-eight thousand dollars? Or would we rather have fewer affordable units if we ended up getting more deeply affordable units than we otherwise might have? And just for me, when, because when, during our first retreat for the majority of folks, we were talking about affordable housing. And then I said, actually, I'd like to discuss equitable affordable housing. So when I said equitable affordable housing, I meant more deeply affordable housing. Going to a group of community members who were kind of being left behind.
So if I understand it right, we would effectively end up with greater quality in our equitable affordable housing, even if it meant less quantity?
Yes.
That would be the path to...
Cause then it becomes affordable housing for whom?
And I think, and this is all what we're gonna be reviewing on the policy level, I think, starting at HCD.
And that process is already underway.
But tonight, we're, so we're mentioning this just in context of this Luigi.
Yeah, if I couldn't keep going.
I'm thinking overall, none of that had to do with this one, by the way.
Right. So just, and I said this this morning in finance, Policy Finance and HR Committee, that we're holding two balls at the same time. We have a project before you tonight and that's really what, I'm gonna get back to that. And we have policy. So, because it's hard to understand the project without talking about the policy, we wanted to cover some of this. So this graph shows, this was also highlighted in the Thrive Asheville report. This shows where, of projects that were built, so opened, constructed, they have their certificate of occupancy. Between eight, twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty-two, this, these are where the units lie. So, and this is not trying to justify or whatever, but I do think it's a very positive thing. And this is a combination of all our tools. So it's Housing Trust Fund, Land Use Incentive Grant. It's just pure conditional zonings where we have no money in it, in the project. It might be, there may be some ARPA units in here or, or bond. We did some projects just through the bond without, you know, going other, where, I'm gonna get to some of these other questions. So, you know, speaking, we spoke with Thrive Asheville staff a couple times since the HCD meeting. And we all agreed and they, you know, that their conclusions were speculative. There still needs to be some more data behind it. We don't have the race of tenants in city-supported units at this point. And they are recommending further research.
Sasha, before you, the slide ahead of that, let me just ask you one question about the graph. One, I'm sorry, it's not gonna be a big thing. But do we have that by unit bedroom size?
No.
Okay.
That would, yeah.
Come on, she did.
Well, that's really what it comes down to.
Thrive did it. We dug out, I dug out the data for them.
And this is a great graph. I will applaud our efforts in the last decade, or four years, I guess.
I do, I will say, comparing Luigi and Housing Trust Fund is a little bit apples and oranges. You know, the Housing Trust Fund often leverages other sources of funding, which gets us to those lower AMIs. Most cities don't take on the super-low income by themselves. That, that's, it's just such an expensive proposition and it's, so I'll stop there. So, kind of putting this all together here and talking a little bit about the Affordable Housing Plan. We're currently working with Enterprise Community Partners. Updates to, you know, our plan will include recommendations on the Affordable Housing Incentives, including Luigi and Housing Trust Funds. We selected Enterprise partly because of their experience and commitment to equity and really centering equity and how they do their work. And we expect to have recommendations back. There will be draft recommendations out in the community in March, maybe early April. But draft, recommendations back from Enterprise in May twenty-four.
Before you leave that slide, also just to name it, it happened in our Policy and Finance Committee meeting that we were talking about making sure that there's support to bring forward recommendations for the points around Energy Star and Green Building and going deeper into getting what we need for our climate resiliency goals.
Yeah, yeah. And we talked about, since we're gonna be having outside experts reviewing the whole plans, we wanna get a good lens on that. Cause as we look at this project, there's fifteen points for energy-related things that are very close to business standards in the industry now. And so I think we're giving away points when that's not really helping us hedge towards our climate goals. So, we'll be, that'll be folded into the assessment and then, you know, brought through committees as, as we get more information.
And I guess I, also just going back to the plan for a minute, like some of these concerns and, you know, we will be getting updated numbers on household sizes and bedroom demand. I mean, some of that, some of that is gonna come out of our plan too, which will help.
That's great.
Inform new, better policy, however it's chosen to go forward. So now I wanna switch back to the project. So, we've unpacked some of that. The developers offered to set aside fifty percent of the affordable units for voucher holders. Based on Housing Authority data that was presented in the Thrive study, ninety-five percent of tenant mobility vouchers have the house, have household incomes in the zero to thirty percent AMI range. And forty-four percent of those voucher holders are African-Americans, so.
Can I illuminate a little bit more on this?
Well, if I could, so I don't know how this makes you all, what you think about it, you might think this helps balance out some of the, you know.
I just wanna point out another point of disparity even in this numbers. I'm glad to see that forty-four percent. The Thrive report also shows that fifty-five percent of the project-based vouchers are held by African-Americans. And so, folks don't realize, so when you live in a Housing Authority property, you have a project-based voucher. After a couple of years, you qualify for a tenant-based voucher. So, I'd be interested in understanding why. Fifty-five percent of the vouchers that are used for, just to give you, I'm always gonna say Lee Walker Heights, Maple Crest, are held by black folk. But comparatively speaking, only forty-four percent of the tenant-based vouchers are also held by that same group. I have ideas. And I also am aware that a white tennis, tenant-based voucher holder is more likely to get placed in the private marketplace than a black person holding a tenant-based voucher. But again, I'm glad to see that forty-four percent.
Antoinette, to answer those questions, Monique, unfortunately, the Housing Authority Director was here earlier tonight. But would that be, since they administer that program, would that be a question for them? Do you think they have information about that?
It might be. Well, it would be a question for them. I have, my intuition leads me in a certain direction. I think people fail to understand just how important it is for, or how many black people consider their communities to be a community. And because family is there, often multi-generational families. If you need someone to look after your child, it's good to know someone that you went to high school with can look after your child. I'm not so sure that necessarily.
So you're saying people might be choosing not to take the tenant-based voucher?
Would take a voucher to move on along Shoals Road.
I see, yeah.
And when we brought this up, when Thrive was in there.
Even if it's a three-bedroom apartment.
I remember when we brought this up with Thrive in the conversation, I'm gonna bring this up with them again on Thursday because they were adamant to the idea that those project-based vouchers needed to stay, that we did not need to increase the tenant-based. And they had a real reason. And I, so I'm meeting with them to follow up to make sure I understood why.
Yeah, that was confusing.
It was, and I think it was alluding to some of what you might be saying, that they were having a harder time getting it out in the community, finding those tenant-based.
So I guess what I'm saying, even when we go through instances and we're talking about project-based vouchers, you're more likely to get places with those project-based vouchers even if you're like...
It'll be a very interesting HCD conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I quite understand that. I mean, and, I mean, at the, at the talk, a couple, it's now been a week ago, the, from the fellow who wrote housing is a, homelessness is a housing problem. I mean, he offered that he thinks the federal government should double the housing availability through HUD. For, right now it's at five percent of Americans qualified for vouchers, tenant-based or otherwise. And he, you know, he, he thinks we should go to ten percent. And I think a lot of people do agree with that sentiment. So that would be contrary if Thrive was actually saying, don't increase your tenant-based voucher number that would make less sense. We're never gonna let you finish this presentation, are we? We just want you to stand there for us.
So, to sum up, on the project, you know, staff is recommending approval of this land use incentive grant application for eighteen years. The number of years kind of, it's not that it doesn't matter, but, you know, the grant amount is really what we're talking about, the total grant amount. But the provision of twenty-nine units will be reserved for voucher holders and the developer will take action to ensure good faith efforts. To make sure units are accessible to qualified households, we've discussed them, working with the Housing Authority, that, and it's, some of the languages from the project aspire where they would always make sure the Housing Authority knew when they had vacancies come up. Some of those, there's some things we can do that aren't, you know, that would help ensure getting folks into those units. And I, and my last comment is kind of what, we, we talked about it this morning, is similar to, the mayor just brought it up, is that if, if council decided they didn't want to approve this land use incentive grant, you know, I think staff would support approval of the conditional zoning, if you, you know, maybe for a lower percentage of, you know, I don't, I don't wanna get in your business. But the approval of housing units is really important. And if we start choking down on the number of housing units we approve in our community, it actually hurts everybody, pushes rents up for everyone. And, and yes, Greg Colburn, who was here last week, and then we've also, there's also another big author I saw in October at the North Carolina Housing Conference. Supply is one of those, supply stability and subsidy are like the tripod of affordable housing.
So I'd love to chime in on that, because I see Luigi and conditional zoning as two totally separate entities. So, I think it's, to deny Luigi does not in and of itself say we don't want to increase supply. What I think is being said is, do we want to give up four point five million dollars in tax incentives for a higher level of affordability? In other words, would one support the very same project with fewer up-end, higher-end affordable, affordable units? Right? Or more deeply affordable without the tax rebate? So to me, they're two separate considerations.
This reminds me of the, I think this is coming with the plan, with Enterprise maybe, but the request of seeing all of the Luigi on a timeline of when they're maturing and coming back. Because if the question I'm sensing from my colleagues is, okay, we're doing a lot of Luigi, this is great, it's been really successful the last five years, but are we doing too much? Are the outcomes exactly what we want? Could we be doing more? Should we halt? Should we wait? Should we improve? And I don't know the whole picture, because I don't know how much we've put aside or rebated for the next ten to thirty years. Like I don't have that grand picture.
There's more importance to me, because what, what is...
But I mean, like, but in ten, like in sixteen years, for instance, this one or eighteen years, that money comes back on the tax roll. We don't know when, like how our overall output of tax rebate looks like at any given point.
I thought we shared that with you several months ago.
It is shown in the budget, we do have a liability line that summarizes annually what we're paying. Because technically it comes in and it goes back out.
I did share a projection over like the next twenty years.
Did you? Okay, I need to dig back.
But there's some questions that are a little different than this thread, cause I feel like we're, this is almost like when we were talking about multimodal earlier. Like we're having a lot of juicy policy conversation and there's a project on the table too. The, the question is, I'm hearing a sense, and I agree, if we see such a dire need for equitable housing that is getting to that lower AMI and this tool isn't doing it and we're adjusting it, got it, we're all on board and excited for that. When could we have that, the conversation at, at the policy conversation at council of, do we pause Luigis? Because where I'm starting to feel really uncomfortable and tension is that this is like the last step in a long process for the project and the applicant. And if our rules, I feel like, if, like hearing colleagues say that fundamentally, there's a concern about this tool. about this tool, I think we should have that policy conversation to tell the community, stop pitching these proposals to us, stop doing the work, back down on the work. We're not going to consider them for six months, or nine months, or two months, or what have you. It just feels like that conversation's really important for us to have. Otherwise, I don't know, I just feel a lot of discomfort having a project go through exhaustive work to get to us, to then say, well, we don't like our rules or our incentive, and we want our incentive to be better. So I feel like...
I think Rachel's got that.
To clarify, I, I want the tool to work. I'm not uncomfortable with the tool. I'm uncomfortable with the outcomes.
Yeah.
Yep, agreed.
And so therefore you'll not want to use the incentive.
Staff has a lot of these same questions. I'll just be super honest with you. We have a lot of these same questions about the amount of money and how it's impacting our future tax base.
And that's why we're doing the study.
And I think part of why, you know, the Affordable Housing Plan, we want to look at holistically. We don't want to just tweak the Luigi policy because that is just in the vacuum. We want to look at it in terms of all the other tools we have and understanding it. And that will take some time. Do you want me to keep going?
Because I should have brought up halting it like three years ago.
So why don't we, since it's, it sounds like there might be some consensus around that, not, not for this project, but can, can we just, because this has come up now like three times. So can we just say that we're going to have on our agenda a vote to, like have a, just to freeze it? Now, I don't even know who's already in the pipeline and thinking about using it. So...
To have a discussion outside of the policy revision of while we're doing policy...
No, no, I get, I'm just trying to think about, and maybe Seth can come back with a recommendation to go to PED, or HCD, HCD, to, to, to say, okay, everybody who's already applied can keep going if they want to, but we won't take any more applications under Luigi after X date or whatever.
And we do plan on having that conversation. I believe it's January 16th, HCD meeting, and then we'll also come to Policy, Finance, and HR, since Policy, Finance, and HR also reviews the Luigi, and talk about how that would fit in with the broader context of the holistic review that Enterprise is undergoing.
Do we have any of these applications on the first meeting agenda in January?
No, I, I, I know of two that are, well, I know of one, that, I mean, it's actually a project that's already been in front of you before, that they want to apply sometime in the spring. And I just heard about a second one, and they have not contacted me, so...
Okay, so way early in the process on the second one.
So people listening, in January, we're going to consider this.
I don't have any applications.
It sounds like it might naturally allow us to have a few months to discuss anyways.
Okay.
So we don't have to have the big M-word.
No, we don't use that word.
I don't want that word.
Not for this. We had this a good talk.
Yeah. I, I can't say I look forward to redoing Luigi because this is difficult, but...
It's hard. And I did want to mention that Derek Allen and the applicant is here in the room. If you have questions about this, they're here for the CZ, obviously, but if you...
I do have comments on this particular project.
Hold on, I'm going, we have people signed up under public hearing, so I was going to do that, but right before I open a public hearing, if any of you have questions for the applicant, or the applicant is dying to talk, are you dying to talk? You are?
No.
We're talked enough, it's okay.
Yeah, we can ask questions on the other part.
Let's do public comment.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have one, so we're going to, this is a two-parter. This one item has two parts. We're going to have two votes, but we're going to have one public hearing. And we've got a few folks that have already signed up to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So we're going to hear both and then vote after separately for each one?
I'm sorry. Clay, you've been waiting patiently for your turn. Don't confuse us at this point. Although most of us have already seen this. Finance was nine hours ago.
Mayor, councillors, I'm here to present the zoning side of this. This is a conditional zoning petition for 115 Fairview Road. The current zone is Urban Village. Due to the size of the project, over 50 units, it has to be conditionally zoned, which pushes it into the residential expansion district. And it would therefore put the residential expansion between the existing Urban Village to the west, and then RM8 to the east, and then there's a couple of different zones to the north there. And I'll show you what's in those locations. You probably are familiar, this is a site where the screen door is located. Kind of, the parcels are, are kind of not perpendicular to Fairview Road at that location. So immediately north of kind of where the entrance to this parcel is, is the complex known as the district. And then to the south of the parcel is, is a railroad track that really kind of bifurcates these two locations. And then to the east is Eastview Avenue, which is where the RM8 district is. And the zoning line goes, will go right down Westview Avenue, which is also the boundary of this parcel. What none of these maps unfortunately show is that there is a pretty significant topographical change from the parking lot and the building location, and Fairview Road, as Fairview Road transfer goes to the east. And then the Westview Avenue neighborhood is pretty high above the ground level of where Screen Door is and where the eventual development will be located. So, so with those topography changes in mind, it, it, it comes to us that, we see that this is the town center, future land use area, buttressing up against traditional neighborhood. And in, in the comprehensive plan, the future land use designation calls for a mix of uses, high-density diverse residential uses, orientation of those to the public realm. We think generally that, that this proposed development is as compliant with those as, as feasible, and no change in the future land use designation is required for your decision. So the site plan, I wanted to first talk about the orientation to the public realm. We worked with the applicant a, a little bit on this, on the building that you see to the north. So this is an 8.25 acre property. And getting that building a little bit closer to the roadway helps to kind of frame up that orientation to the public realm. But again, because of that topography change, it, it has to kind of come in a little bit, otherwise there's going to be a significant amount of, of excavation, or that building's going to be really tall. So this is kind of an optimal orientation for that northern building that kind of frames up the corridor along Fairview Road. There's frontage on this parcel on both Westview and Fairview. During the process, the applicant made some changes to the layout to bring all of the residential units internal to the site, rather than having any access off Fairview Road, which allows for a property buffer and the preservation of a pretty significant growth along that road for the neighbors that live in the Westview Avenue location. You also notice kind of a diversity of housing types on the property. The north and south buildings are multi-story, multifamily units. And then you see three fourplexes, which are a townhome style, which also have parking beneath them. The amenities on the site are, throughout the site, there's a central compactor, there's a pool and a clubhouse, kind of immediately to the west and north of the largest building shown there on the site. Open space generally is around the external areas of the site, and you can see the connectivity of the sidewalk through the site and up to the existing sidewalks along Fairview. The affordable discussion has already taken place and, and will likely result in us having to make some text changes to the actual conditions. But the proposal, when it was put forward, and this was originally scheduled back in September, but we continued it while the Luigi process took place, showed a 20% affordable units to achieve a density of 30 point, 34.1 units per acre. The total is 269 apartments and 12 townhome units. With the addition of the underparking, the total spaces are 333 spaces, which is about 1.2 spaces per unit. Eight of those will be accessible, and 18 external bicycle parking facilities will be located on the site, and internal bicycle parking provided for the residents. The site plan and landscaping is all compliant. Street trees are being met along Westview by preservation of existing trees. The applicant will be identifying those trees prior to final TRC, and will make sure the spacing is all proper. Rather than going through and clearing out and planting new trees, it's, 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 it really is a significant buffer, if you're familiar with this roadway. Along Fairview, however, it's a little bit different. There's an existing sewer easement along, right along where the existing sidewalk is. So the street trees proposed by the applicant, are they're going to pull the existing trees out of there, plant them on their property so that they can, they are no longer in the easement, which is technically what we require by the UDO. That sidewalk, forecasting into one of the conditions, the existing sidewalk is a five-foot wide sidewalk with a five-foot planting buffer. And the applicant has proposed a technical modification to maintain that and restore it near the entrance so that the continuity of that sidewalk design continues from Westview all the way down past a couple of other businesses until it gets into that intersection down there, which is a little interesting. Parking is, is compliant. Tree canopy protection is met with preservation on site. Open space is compliant. Stormwater, it is going to be reviewing this as a part of the final TRC. And after that, these are some renderings of the facility. So this is coming into the site. You see on the left, that building that's kind of tucked up against Fairview. On the right, it's kind of the end cap of that longer building. And at the lower portion are the, are the amenity locations of the pool and the clubhouse. And then the buildings in the back there is a rendering of what the townhome style buildings will be looking like. These are the architectural renderings of those buildings. This is the building fronting onto Fairview. This is the larger building that's, it's kind of hard to see in this, but it's shaped, I've got to come up with a word for the shape. It's kind of like a boomerang almost. And then these are the, what is it?
Chevron.
Chevron, thank you. Excellent. It's like Stargate. Sorry. The townhome elevations are this. So it's a little bit of architectural kind of style in this facility, differentiating the units. And then the technical modifications. So minimum of five-foot wide internal sidewalks, the residential expansion requires 10. This provides for a little bit less impervious surface. It gives the applicant to provide some more landscaping adjacent to these sidewalks. No 10-foot wide sidewalk on Fairview to match the existing sidewalk. That, you know, it, it's an interesting amenity to have that, that, that planting strip next to a parking to a sidewalk. Because the street trees have to come back, it, I think it provides a little bit more comfort to a pedestrian. I, you know, when we do these, we have to put signs out there, and people tend to accelerate pretty aggressively along that road. And I felt more comfortable walking down that five-foot sidewalk. No sidewalk is proposed along Westview Avenue. This is because it's a very small, it's a small neighborhood. The road is fairly narrow. The tree growth is extensive. Any kind of provision of a sidewalk would eat into that buffer. And I think it, my recollection of the notes of the neighborhood meeting was that that was something that was actually re-commented on by the neighbors in that location. There's a front setback reduction. Again, this discussion about getting that building up against Fairview Road requires a technical modification allowing for a five-foot setback, where normally would require a 15-foot setback. This project condition has been eliminated by a design component. So now the, the distance, which the throat distance is, is the vehicle sacking from the site getting on the Fairview, is now the required 90 feet. And this perpetually problematic, no bike lanes will be provided into the development. There's a whole host of other standard conditions that we commonly associate with these. The, it sounds to me like the Affordable Housing Condition is going to need some wordsmithing before its final conclusion, if that includes a voucher provision. The ones that we drafted back in September did not include that. And then the deed restriction, of course. We feel that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan goals. It is responsible growth. It's definitely in filled development in an area that's showing a lot of activity. There's a lot of new commercial activity, breweries, big surprise, restaurants, other kind of facilities. A lot of these things are within walking distance of the site. It is a diversity of housing supply. And, and it actually does do a nice kind of transition. If you look at the site, it comes from dense development to the townhomes, and then you get up into kind of the more single-family residential. And because of that topography and the presence of that buffer, it provides that transition both visually as well as geographically. With the incentives and the other considerations that you are to vote on, it, it does provide for additional affordability and diversity of housing types. This was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee back in July, voted and approved. In August, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved it on September 14th, 2023. And based on these findings, staff concurs with Planning and Zoning Commission, and we recommend approval of the conditional zoning.
As is typical, I'm curious if this project has a plan for renewable energy, or if there's anything limiting a future installation?
So I, my, my discussions with staff hasn't, has evolved as my experience with you has increased. And my last opportunity to have discussions with this applicant was back in July and August. I have talked extensively with the applicants about the tax incentives. And in fact, back then, a few of them weren't fully baked out by Treasury because this was all part of the Inflation Reduction Act. So I have offered again to provide the applicant with support, information, how they can ask these questions. But we have not gotten to the point where it is a project condition.
Thank you.
Did you mention something about the vouchers? So the current form does not have set aside language, or does?
It, it, my conditions do not, but, but I would, I, you know, I have, I noticed that you were discussing that in the prior one, and so I would need to change that if it was going to be...
So actually, that leads me to a question for my dear friend Derek Allen. Can you?
Okay, and no other questions for Clay? Good?
Oh, I don't know. Not about the zoning.
Just checking, make sure while he is there. All right, good. Derek Allen, you're up.
So Derek, my understanding is, in light of the Luigi discussion we've been having, you were willing to kind of alter the Affordable Housing language such that you would prioritize vouchers? Is that still your position?
Yes. And, and we were sneaking up on that in terms of explaining that, vetting that out inside of the Luigi discussion. And one of the, the slides that Sasha has, and she's been great to work with, one of the slides that she had talked about that, and I wanted to put a finer point on it in our condition. But I want to talk about it just in quick numbers, and that is on this deeply affordable that we keep talking about. 114 of those units that the city has been involved in to date have been in that deeply affordable, that 30 to 50%. And here, we can define that with those that are voucher holders. Voucher holders by definition are 30% to 50%. It could be lower than that. And I think the number was 95% of the tenant mobility voucher holders are in that 0 to 30% EMI. What we are doing is that we are setting aside, reserving half of our 20%, so 10% of our total number of units are set aside for those. And I've worked with Mr. Branham on a, a condition that actually puts that into the CZ as well to memorialize that as part of the, the project condition.
Can you read that so we know? Because I just will say that I love that language, and I would love to see it in every other one that comes forward.
Yes, I'll be happy to, Councilmember Ossie. So this would propose to alter the language in the current conditions for this CZ application specifically to condition 4D. This is within the Affordable Housing Language, specific to how the vouchers would be handled. And I will say at the outset that the goal of this language is to strengthen what had previously been a, a set aside for potential voucher holders, to essentially a reservation, putting the voucher holders at the top of the list.
So first, so essentially a first in line?
Yes. And it creates an additional burden, or obligation, I should say, on the developer to go through the process, to essentially actively market it to those voucher holders. So the new proposed language, based upon the same statistics offered by the developer, would be 50% of these Affordable Housing units will be reserved for HACAA Housing Choice vouchers, and voucher holders will receive priority as to the leasing of said units. To this end, developer will notify HACAA of the actual or pending availability of eligible units on a monthly basis. If no voucher holder is available, or able to commence tenancy when an eligible unit becomes available, that unit may be leased as an affordable unit. The next available unit shall be reserved and marketed to voucher holders by noticing HACAA as set forth here and above. And I will note, I missed one thing in there. It's the next available unit of the same type. So that's ensuring one-to-one.
This is similar to what we did with One Oak Plaza, right? That was that similar language.
It, it is the first iteration of very similar language.
And the idea is that, because I guess we're hearing, down the pipeline, we have no idea if HACAA or other voucher providers will still have these vouchers in hand, and we're kind of requiring you to accept them should they be available.
Correct. And, and circling back to that 114 units to date in that deeply affordable that the city's been involved with, this would increase that number just in this project alone with the 29 units by 25%.
Wow. You flew past a statistic... You flew past a statistic earlier that I want to hear you say again. How many of the current voucher holders are at 0% to 30% AMI? You just said it.
Almost all of them.
95%?
95%, I thought that's what you said.
Yeah. So, that's another.
That was a big slide for me when Sasha was putting in those supplemental materials from the earlier parts.
And another interesting point that may not be interesting to anybody but me, the current payout for a voucher, for one, happens to be on par with the market rate. So, the developer is, but even if it were higher, you couldn't, you could only do what the market rate is.
And it depends on what the units are, but yes. And they try to, and kudos to the folks in Asheville for pushing to get those higher rates because of the rent problems that we have here, and rent challenges that we have here in our community.
And the reason I think that is somewhat important, because I'm always aware that unless you're a nonprofit, a developer is in business to make a profit, and I recognize that we have to depend on developers to get us to the great need of supply that still permeates our area. I think right now, we need about 5,500 units, and speculation is that in a few years, that num, in order to meet demand, that number will be up to 7,500. And because we don't develop, we as a city can't do that, so I firmly believe that, quite frankly, the market determines what's affordable. In other words, as long as demand exceeds supply, we won't get to our affordability goal. So, I'm actually very grateful that you'll lean into prioritization of voucher holders. And you mentioned a number where we've had other instances where developers have said we'll accept. So, in that 100 number, we don't know how many of those are really technically set aside to the extent that you're willing to do in this instance, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
As long as Derek's up here, any other questions for the developer?
I don't think so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you need, what do you need? You need motions?
You need a conditional zoning first. I'm going to open the public hearing.
And then you need both motions?
And then we'll do one, yeah, we'll do them separately. So, all right, so we have five people signed up to speak under this item. When you, when your name's called, you can, and you begin speaking, Maggie will keep the time, you'll have three minutes, watch the lights on the lectern, green means go, orange yellows means you're getting close to the end, and then red means stop. The first person signed up to speak, and I think I said you'll get three minutes, right? The first person signed up to speak is Andrew Paul.
Hey, everyone. My name is Andy, I'm here because I'm a lead organizer with Asheville For All, pro-housing organization, and I'm speaking in support of the conditional zoning and the Luigi. We know that we need a lot more homes, housing scarcity in Asheville is pushing up rents and home prices for working families of all incomes, and I should say, if I could come here and support every upzoning, every conditional zoning, I would. It's tricky. I think this one project is worth highlighting because it shows we can have new apartments built at the street, near older neighborhoods, close to the city core, like not off some like awful highway by the edge of town, because ultimately, that's where we need, the homes, near Biltmore, near Mission, near downtown, near UNCA, et cetera. And we need those other places too, but Biltmore Village, this place should be hopping with residents of all income levels. It's great to see a diversity of home sizes in this proposal, and it's great to see the density bonus. But that aside, I want to say something about Luigi, because I think there has been some not-so-great reporting, and I think there's been some bad analysis floating around, some of it mentioned in the same breath as this Fairview Road development. So, the presentation from Thrive last month shows that we should think about how we allocate points in order to incentivize the lower end of the AMI spectrum. There are families who are struggling, and then there are families who are really struggling, and that latter group could use extra help. That makes sense, that's the right thing to do. But what Thrive is not saying is that we should let perfect be the enemy of the good. So, if we decide Luigi is imperfect and vote it down on an ad hoc basis, we are closing a gap, but we are closing that gap by bringing down those who are struggling down towards the level of those who are really struggling. That's not how I want to close this gap, and when we're doing that, we're exacerbating an even bigger gap, because the biggest gap is between those who own land and those who don't, between those who have options when it comes to housing and those who are struggling with a lack of options. And just to clear things up, what the Thrive presentation certainly does not say, it does not say that building new homes leads to displacement. This is a myth, it's a fallacy, the data just isn't there, not in this study, not in any other study. The more we prevent new homes, the more we pit renters against each other, low-income renters versus really low-income renters, and every other level, and it's only to deepen the pockets of landlords. And then it becomes more costly to take care of those struggling renters, which just means the city has to make harder decisions on which working families get support, and that's all bad. But I think these apartments are good, I think the grant application is good, we should absolutely improve Luigi next year, but above all, let's get these homes that we need built. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Linda Yaverbaum. And Linda, you'll tell me if I did not pronounce your last name correctly. Linda, I'm going to just tell you to pull that there.
Actually, there's a video sent in. Yes.
You don't usually get videos. Yeah. It says there's a signal. Let me try some.
115 Fairview Road Project, traffic congestion, say D and F.
Can we turn that up?
This intersection is currently congested, chaotic, uncontrolled. Traffic signals with erratic timing. Call stopped vehicles to be stranded dead center in the intersection, triggering longer backups. And dangerous maneuvers. Resulting in massive backups into Biltmore Village. Pedestrian safety and walkability are virtually nonexistent. And vehicles driving over the dangerous paths, pedestrians crosswalks. Pedestrians on Fairview Road will increase dramatically for the large number of 115 Fairview Road project residents. Consideration to be given to the hundreds of new vehicles for 115 Fairview Road project live areas for this already congested, chaotic, and unsafe intersection. Consideration, appropriate ADA sidewalks throughout the area. Marked pedestrian crossings with pine red and white in a wide light safe long time. New traffic light at intersection, Sweet Creek Road and London Road allow only one direction of London Road traffic at a time to go through the intersection. This will reduce congestion from left-hand vehicles that take the concerns caused by poor sidewalks. Next, pedestrian pedestrian safety priority for the 115 Fairview Road project.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
The next person signed up to speak is Jared Wheatley. Our newest P&amp;Z member.
I am a P&amp;Z member, but I'm just a lowly citizen right now. Good evening, council, mayor. Just wanted to speak real quick on housing. I know that housing is a human right, and what that means is the whole spectrum of housing. That includes shelter housing to those beautiful, single-family homes on Kimberly Avenue. Now, apartments are a part of that plan because by their very nature, they're temporary and transitional housing. We know this because wealth in the United States is disproportionate to other parts of the world bound up in the real estate that somebody owns. So, if somebody is living in a rental unit of any type, particularly in apartments, you go, okay, this person is trying to move towards another path. They're a pretty interesting tool because they allow somebody to try out a new part of the city, a new city in general. They may even allow somebody to try out a different type of transportation, like access to buses, which they might have not have in their, in their current location. So, that's really cool. And we talked a little bit about incentives, but what I want to focus on are also some of the disincentives that we've seen across time. So, if you take the entire MSA of Asheville, Asheville, the city itself is only providing about 20% to 25% of multifamily dwellings, and so what that actually shows is that the city, whether it means to or not, is actually pushing people into the counties, surrounding counties, and actually making a more car-dependent society, which is also less sustainable, which I think both of those objectives fall outside of our goals. So, other constraints we have are high interest rate market, right, where we, it's more difficult and more expensive to build, we have topographical constraints, but we have things we can control too, like zoning along transportation corridors, we could improve those for housing. And I think developers may also benefit from a little bit of that change in culture we talked about here, providing a level of certainty to where when they approach the city, they feel like they understand what they're coming up against, and that they're not trying to necessarily face skepticism or a moving target. But we also see that in our communities. Many of the community members who speak up against housing projects are people who are not facing housing insecurity, and because they're not facing housing insecurity...
Thank you. Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I appreciate the conversation about the difference between Luigi and the Housing Trust. Of course, I would like to talk, make a comparison between drops and buckets. Okay, so what we're talking about here on this specific project, to provide supply of affordable housing here in Asheville, North Carolina, is a $253,000 annual effort over 18 years. All right, that's the drop. The bucket, which is creating unaffordable housing, unaffordable everything, is of course our tourism industry and our tourism tax, all right? That is being collected $35 million a year. All right, so this 253 annual, or $253,000 annual effort compared to the annual effort of tourism is less than 1%, less than 1% of the take, 0.72% of $35 million. Now, if you multiply out $35 million over the next 18 years, if the Tourism Development Authority continues to collect that much money, if the bicycle lane goes on forever and the party never ends, then they will collect $630 million over that 18 years as compared to this $4.5 million effort in supply. So, when we're spending that much money to make Asheville the most desirable place in the whole world because we got pickleball, we got beer, we got pub cycle, we got the museum, we got all this stuff, we got the Biltmore House, and everybody wants to be here, it will never be anything other than an unaffordable place to be. It's an expensive place to be, always will be, if we continue to do that. And trying to, you know, do these two things at one time are, it's kind of silly. I mean, not to say that you shouldn't put in an effort into supplying something, it's just a comparison of the scale. I feel like we're trying to lose weight on a diet of nothing but Oreos and bacon. It is that silly of what we have going on in this community. And, you know, leadership is going to have to do something about it. I know the county commissioners are finally asking, like, God, are we spending too much money to tell everybody in the world that this is the most awesome place in the world? Oh, no, let's do more. Because every time another hotel comes on, every time more Airbnbs come on, we get more people doing this, it's a positive feedback loop. This is a broken system. It's just, it's hideous what we have here, but I applaud the effort of this $253,000 supply. Thanks.
If you like that, you can come to every city council meeting, because Mr. Wayne Scott will be here.
Every time.
And I do have to remind you, no clapping, we do encourage some jazz hands if you like the speaker's comments, and thumbs down if you don't like the speaker's comments. The last person signed up to speak under this item is Bobby Smith.
Hi, yes, my name is Bobby Smith, and I'm from the Stoner Road community, which is about 300 feet from this plan here. I worked with Ken Putnam for about four and a half years to get the current traffic from the district apartments and...
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can lean to the other two for us.
I worked with Ken Putnam for about four and a half years to get the traffic on Stoner Road slowed down, I guess you could say, speed breakers, signs, everything we could to take 1,400 cars a day down to 1,100. I'm still trying to wonder how we got to 1,000. This project here would devastate our community. It would probably devastate all of Oakley itself. I understand that we need housing, but tearing down already-built communities just to put something that is more of an eyesore, $1,500 a month, one-bedroom apartments, making three times the income just to get into it, it's not a good trade-off. But, yeah, I think we need to scrap this idea and come up with something a little bit more, less intrusive. Thank you.
Is that the end of public comment?
Yes, that is, yes.
Do we, you know, this has come up before, I think it was around 101 Charlotte and stuff, but do we ever have a way of finding out when these roads may get sidewalks or may get better intersections or...
So, I was going to say, so some context into the gentleman's comments about Stoner Road, we had a very lengthy conversation and negotiation when the council approved the district, which is on that apartment complex across the street and which Stoner Road runs beside. You wouldn't use Stoner Road necessarily to get to this project, but there was, at the same time, the River Mill Loft Apartments, which you do have to go down Stoner Road to get to, which is down on the river, that was all happening at the same time, so it was a lot of change in that community in a short period of time, so I appreciate those comments. So, when we, when we did the district, we required that that developer not only put in the 10-foot sidewalk, but they provided... Um, you, you wouldn't use Stoner Road necessarily to get to this project, but there was, at the same time, the River Mill Loft Apartments, which you do have to go down Stoner Road to get to, which is down on the river, that was all happening at the same time. So it was a lot of change in that community in a short period of time. So I appreciate those comments. So when we, when we did the district, we required that that developer not only put in the ten-foot sidewalk, but they provided, I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, which sounds cheap at that time, to build the sidewalk connection down to Sweeten Creek and to deal with the railroad crossings. So now if you walk that, which I have recently several times because my child was playing soccer up at Oakley, you, you can now navigate it by, by sidewalk to get down to Sweeten Creek. And that was a whole negotiation to deal with the pedestrian experience with the district installation. And then we probably need to do some research to remember what we did with Stoner Road. I'm not looking at you, Brad, no, you weren't even here, it was your predecessor. So, so your question, Sage, about...
Well, I mean, that video is pretty telling. There's a lot of issues going on. I mean, it's a lot of design-based, I think a lot of it's outside our control.
Well, because Sweeten Creek is a DOT road.
It's a state-owned road. But so this has come up in the past, around Merriman and stuff, like, how can we help the community? They can petition DOT for these things, because I understand there is a process.
Well, I will say that as a, one of the members on the NPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization that oversees the budget plans and policies for the state-maintained roads, this conversation has come up. Are we going to prioritize the local corridors? Are we going to dump all of our funds into the I-26 connector project?
Right.
And that's a choice that was made so that we could move forward, but it means that roads like Sweeten Creek or Louisiana Avenue get bumped back like twenty years or longer if we don't find other funds for it. So the correlation between the traffic going up, our tourism industry, and how locals always have to foot the bill for the above and below-ground industry to support it is, is recognized and heard.
Yeah, and, and we might, just as a follow-up to tonight's meeting, ask if staff could reach out to DOT and see if there are any improvements planned for that intersection that we saw in the video.
And if there's a community input process that we can allow residents to know about. Because I thought that Ken had said there was one, but then I never found it. I'm not clear.
For that, for that intersection.
Just anytime in the community, anywhere, there's a state-owned road or a problem with it, that residents, because we have a really strong... We have no public comment. We have a really strong petitioning community, and my understanding is DOT can be petitioned.
It seems like the only time you learn about a DOT public hearing opportunity is if somebody locally elevates the opportunity.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Because they don't really, and even if you look at their websites for their projects, it's...
Yeah. So I just wonder if, if there is such an avenue, may we please know about it?
I wonder if having Tristan, the head of our NPO, come and just refresh the full council on some of the process. I mean, I'm a year into NPO, you've been on it for quite some time, but the state planning and prioritization process happens in like seven-year cycles, and so we're in one right now, but I think that, that information might be useful.
So the conflict I think that I'm hearing is when the state of North Carolina, after the Depression, bailed out the counties, they bought out all the county-owned roads. And that's why we have state roads and then city roads. And so this is a major corridor that's a state-maintained road. Now, what I'm imagining, I'm seeing right now is the conflict I anticipated at the NPO level when we chose to deprioritize roads like this, is that we were going to get pushback. You cannot build more when we don't have the above and below-ground infrastructure to support it. And so the, the input is unsurprising, but please bring the heat to the NPO. The NPO is the westernmost counties of state-maintained roads, and we rarely if ever get public comment, and we meet on the third Thursdays of the month. It's a hybrid meeting, so you can attend in person or virtually.
You know, the, just a comment about the traffic impacts of this project, and I know people look at the size of the, of these housing projects, and they look at the number of units, and they assume that it's going to mean a certain consequence around traffic impacts, but the commercial, the historic commercial use of this property probably had a similar, if not more impactful, traffic situation, I mean, thanks from the audience, when it was open. I, I know there's disagreement from the crowd, but I've always been surprised when I actually see the traffic studies around these, and that they are not as impactful as you would think. For some reason, a lot of times people think about the size of it, but the fact of the matter is probably the two Starbucks down in Biltmore Village are wreaking more havoc on everybody than, than an apartment complex because of the number of in-and-out traffic that happens around... We're getting the thumbs down on that. So, anyway, that just, but it is, it is a recognize, I think, I think we did conclude to Fairview Road, that entire length of Fairview Road is a state-maintained road. Even though it narrows, you would think that would be city where it gets into this area.
Mayor, in the interest of time, I'm happy to make a motion.
Uh, yes, please do.
I'm going to do the land use incentive grant motions first, correct, Brad? Right? Procedurally. Staff, I recommend, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the land use incentive grant application for Catalyst Capital Partners at 115 Fairview Road for eighteen years and a total grant four million five hundred and sixty thousand with the provision that twenty-nine units will be reserved for voucher holders, and the developer will take actions to ensure good faith efforts to make units accessible to all qualified households who want to apply.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Is that the light, is that right?
So we're, we're dealing with two different things here. We're dealing with conditional zoning and a Luigi, and the aspect of the conditional zoning and the conditions regarding vouchers has been shifted. So in order to have those two things sync up, perhaps you could read the motion to say that the reservation around vouchers will match the language in the conditional zoning if approved.
Okay, so without a second, I can, I'll change my language there, so that the, oh, gosh. Provision that twenty-nine units will be reserved for voucher holders, say it again, Brad.
Brad, why don't you, you have a suggested motion there. Could you, could you offer what the wording should be and allow the movement to, to affirm your move?
I don't even see the suggested.
Yeah, it's the motion to approve the land use incentive grant application for Catalyst Capital Partners, 115 Fairview Road, with a per-unit subsidy of up to eighty thousand and a total grant value of up to four-point-five-six-zero-million over a period of eighteen years. That, that, it doesn't say anything about matching the conditional zoning.
And I have a totally different one, so, sorry for the confusion.
And I'll read the specific language.
Yeah.
I can read the specific language for the record.
Please do.
And with regard to vouchers, fifty percent of the affordable housing units will be reserved for HACAA Housing Choice vouchers, and voucher holders will receive priority as to the leasing of said units. To this end, developer will notify HACAA of the actual or pending availability of available units on a monthly basis. If no voucher holder is able to commence tenancy within, with an eligible unit, when an eligible unit becomes available, that unit may be leased as an affordable unit. The next available unit of the same type shall be reserved and marketed to the voucher holder by notifying HACAA as set forth above.
You need that all in the motion?
So what, what...
I'm just saying...
On the, on the record, so, so that the language will match between the two motions.
Yeah, that's all I thought we had to say, as it matches the resolution for the conditional zoning.
As right.
Yeah.
Feel like we got a motion there?
That was confusing. I think we did.
Okay, so that was a motion. We have a second. Maggie, Maggie, Maggie seconded.
So on Luigi.
Okay, this is the Luigi. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, oh, okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all those in favor, really raise your hand high, so...
You're a mess tonight. Oh, sorry.
Okay, and then all those opposed, raise your hand. Maggie, you're not looking, they're raising their hands. Okay, you got it?
Sorry, Maggie.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Anybody ready with the second motion? Motion on the conditional zoning.
I moved to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 115 Fairview Road from urban, urban village to residential expansion conditional zone, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community, and that the request will, one, provide infill development in targeted growth areas, two, increase the supply of affordable housing in proximity to schools, transit, and parks, and three, promotes the development and availability of affordable and workforce housing.
Sandra, second.
And once again, for that record, with the amended language around voucher holders.
Yes, that agreed. Second, second.
Okay.
Sorry, Brad.
Sandra seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we confused you. Are you, want us to, all those in favor, raise your hand. So we shook it up a little bit there, Maggie. All right, all those opposed, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We have concluded the public hearing agenda. I'm going to take, we're going to take a five-minute, eight, six, seven...
Five minutes.
I just would like a break.
Yeah, okay, ten-minute break. Come back at eight, ten. All right, so we are up to the new business portion of our agenda. Sasha, who's going the distance for us tonight, is back up on a resolution approving revisions to the Housing Trust Fund policy. Because, you know, we like to talk about policy.
I feel like I should have a hat and a cane and some, like, tap shoes.
I mean, I think Clay demonstrated that if you talk really fast, you can just...
I can talk fast. All right, so the, I'm here, thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm here to present some housing, Housing Trust Fund policy revisions. We're getting ready to open our funding cycle, and we want to update our policy a little bit here. So, AHAC, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, has made some recommendations on revising this policy, and staff has evaluated those recommendations and made revised recommendations for you. It's made a few substantive changes, along with just some updates and clarifying language, and AHAC did make recommendations for changes to the scoring rubric, but staff, we did not have enough time, honestly, just to analyze it, and they were pretty big changes, so that is not for tonight. Just for everyone's information, the Housing Trust Fund was established in two thousand, and you, this body last updated the policy in December of twenty-two, a year ago. There's an annual city allocation from the general fund of approximately a half million dollars, and that's been happening for the last five to ten years. And between two thousand one and twenty nineteen, the Housing Trust Fund loaned approximately fifteen million and produced around thirteen hundred units. In the last cycle, City Council allocated four-point-three million, close to four-point-four million, towards the construction of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine units. So here's our, just very briefly, here's our upcoming schedule. We are opening up for applications on Friday. We have a closing date of January thirty-first. There will be an initial review of applications by HCD, and then coming back to HCD for final recommendations in April, and then the following week, we'll be coming to council for that final decision. That's actually very similar to the schedule we followed last year. Currently, there's approximately four-point-one million available in the Housing Trust Fund for the next cycle. I will also be bringing to you in January a request to rescind a loan that was made in, during, in twenty-twenty, or allocated in twenty-twenty, it never went out the door, but that developer has not been able to complete that project, and that's for approximately one-point-two. So we would end up with five-point-three million able to loan out in this cycle. So just really briefly, AHAC met in November and recommended changes. In summary, there's revised priorities for the use, for the use of Housing Trust Fund dollars, for more units, deeper affordability, accepting vouchers, longer affordability periods being the highest priorities, and a recommendation for, to align the Housing Trust Fund scoring, which I said before, they recommend some recommendations. We didn't adopt those this-go-round because they were extremely complicated in terms of analyzing them and seeing if they actually got us to where we wanted to go. And lastly, there's updated language and organization of the content to help with the policy's clarity. And this is just a table, kind of breaking this down a little bit. I will point out what I haven't noted, I haven't said anything yet about, there was a request from AHAC to allow off-site infrastructure improvements as part of eligible expenses. We are recommending allowing that if it can demonstrate it only benefits the affordable development. And why we're recommending that is it ensures city funds go directly to the development and not unrelated projects. We're really focusing this funding on the actual units. AHAC also recommended an additional definition for the affordability period for down payment assistance. Staff agreed with that and added clarity. Staff is also recommending a change in the maximum loan amount from ten percent of total development cost to ten percent of the total development cost per affordable unit. So if you have an a hundred percent affordable project, this doesn't really affect you, but if you had a mixed income development, it's saying that we're really focusing our funding on those affordable units. And this also aligns with the county's policy as well. We've taken out the underwriting and closing pieces of the policy because those are really operational, they don't belong in a policy. I'm just trying to clean this up a little bit, make it easier to understand, and I've already talked about the scoring a couple of times. So when staff looks at these policy recommendations, we think it's going to clarify for applicants and decision-makers with the applicants, applications when we bring them forward, the changes to the loan terms, funding only affordable units ensures a good use of our city funds. And the only downside of all of this is that we just have needed more time to assess the recommended changes to the scoring rubric. AHAC voted eight to zero to support these changes, and Housing Community Development met on November twenty-seventh and voted three to zero to recommend approval. So we're recommending adoption of these changes and as outlined in the policy document, and we have a suggested motion for you. Happy to take any questions.
I really just want to say thank you to you and other housing staff because I think it was in the middle of the year when we said we'd like to have this by the end of the year. And we have had, there's so much movement and work being done around affordable housing in the city of Asheville right now that it's, it's simply remarkable. And I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for actually getting this to us and for doing it so well that it came so heavily approved. I mean, it's a great thing.
I do think, I will say, going back to our earlier conversation, there may be bigger changes coming as a part of the plan. We just wanted to make a few adjustments before we open up for applications.
I would like to adopt the Housing Trust Fund policies outlined in the revised policy document.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. And I'm just, it looks like we do not have anyone signed up to speak under this item. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Sasha.
You almost caught me off-guard there with such a short item.
I know. It was well-betted.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Please, next item.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Council, I'm here to present a Affordable Housing Trust Fund request from Commonwealth Development for Fairhaven Summit. You did see this project earlier this year and approved a loan in April for a half a million dollars. This pro, this is a low-income housing tax credit project, it's a hundred percent affordable, it includes seventy-seven units with a mix of incomes, so thirty percent, fifty percent, sixty, and eighty, averaging sixty percent below. Commonwealth Development Corporation is requesting an additional four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand for, for this project, and the additional funds are needed to cover the gap created by increased interest rates. So we're recommending approval and, sorry, just really quickly, a reminder, although I know you've seen this project several times, this project's on Sweeten Creek Road, it's a nine-percent tax credit project. If this request is approved, that would total H, Housing Trust Fund loan of nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. They have, are also being very upfront with us and saying they could reduce this request to three-seventy-five if the U.S. Treasury ten-year yield is below its current four-point-nine percent at the time of rate lock. So that means when we're getting close to closing, they lock in their rates with their equity investors, and we'll know where that is. The loan terms, the twenty-year maturity, payments are deferred, but two percent compounding interest, and we would be in third lien position. Buncombe County funded this project at two, I may even have that here, I'm sorry. I will come back to that, I have that. So here's the mix of unit types and bedrooms, and they have this shown by AMI. So PVV is project-based vouchers, so they have an agreement with the housing authority to have project-based vouchers. The key program is a, a different program that also works with people with disabilities as well. So it's a, it's a great mix of units here. So this is, just really quickly, their financing sources, they have their first mortgage, Buncombe County has funded it, one-point-two million. We would be the next, you know, so third in line here at nine-seventy-five. They do have four-hundred-thousand dollars of home funds as well, and some other sources of, of financing here. HCD reviewed this request on November twenty-seventh and voted three to zero to recommend approval. We've outlined... twenty-seventh and voted three to zero to recommend approval. Um, we've outlined the pros and the cons of this action here. Um, even with that increased amount, the subsidy per unit's still under thirteen thousand per unit, which is great. Um, the loan is less than five percent of the total development cost and it's leveraging other funding sources. Um, and it aligns with our consolidated plan for prioritizing rental house, housing affordable to sixty percent below. It's out of cycle with our regular cycle, but since this has already been funded, we have a really big interest in making sure this project happens. They are trying to move quickly to closing, probably in January. And Sean Brady with Commonwealth is here, if you have any questions for him. So this is our recommendation. Um, we're recommending approval based on, you know, the number of units, the mix and who they're serving, having these different voucher programs involved and that it's relatively low cost for us.
It really is a great project. I have a question for legal for Brad. This language we were just talking about where if the rates change, that they may not need all this money. Is there a legal language in there that we can actually tie that in?
It's not incorporated at present.
Right, but is there a way to draft that?
I think that we could, as part of the, if approved, we could incorporate as a condition of the approval that, uh, at rate lock, if that, that rate is approved, then, um, but again, you know, would probably require them to come up before council.
If it were to change? We can't have language that says up to depending on.
So, so this is really a contractual obligation. So we need both parties to be, um, in agreement to that.
So I thought we had it in the resolution, do we not?
I, I have to pull it up and tell you for sure, Sasha, you may know better than me.
Let's see.
Um, just while we're looking real quick, I'll say, you know, having as the home consortium chair and stuff and watching this project move through the hoops, and I will say there's been a lot of hoops and how many partners are at the table and everything, I agree with what Sasha said, like, we really need to rally and get this one over the finish line. Hopefully, rates will come down. None of us here can really change that, but, um, I just want to encourage support for this in general.
And I was thinking as an up to amount as well.
Yeah, I thought there was a way.
The, the rate lock being a very objective standard that we can document.
Like the proposal language in the staff report is there, but the motion doesn't include the language. I don't have a link, the resolution is actually not.
While we're looking that up, um, affordable units also need affordable utilities. Has there been a discussion about including renewable energy at this location?
I could let the developer answer, I know he's.
I know that when we, um, I've been asking this question for so long and I just want every neighborhood to have a plan for a hopeful future. And I found that, um, the housing authority reached out and, um, put solar on Maple Crest, um, because it, it increased the term of affordability. So I'm curious if that's, if it's not an option, is it at least possible to look at a design where the air conditioning units aren't a barrier to future installation?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Sean Brady with Commonwealth Development. Um, so we, um, at, at the, at previous discussions, we had already mentioned that we have, um, uh, set the final design such that the roof trusses will support solar panels at Fairhaven Summit and also left space in our mechanical rooms. One other thing that happened subsequent to that is, um, we actually worked with Clay Mitchell, who's actually really great at giving us some kind of guidance on, at the time, this is probably four to six months ago, but maybe longer, the legislation was still kind of draft and we did do a financial analysis. What we found at the time was that the cost of the system was too expensive and as you can tell, we, we've been struggling for a while to contain our costs that are up over eighty percent. Um, I, I do believe personally though, that, that there is a opportunity for that. Um, it, it would provide an advantage. So, so there, as you mentioned, there's a utility component to rent. So we have to stay affordable with the rents, but also that housing cost has to incorporate the cost of utilities as well. So the benefit of solar would be no utility cost and water and sewer could be separate, obviously, but the, the electrical component is the biggest part of the utility allowances. And so there's a huge, I believe, benefit there. You'd have to have a solar system and also battery storage system as well. And so I, and I think that may have been what kind of tipped us over, um, on the scales. But it was also very preliminary and, and honestly, we'd need to do, I think, probably more detailed analysis. Um, our plan is still to, we have a construction contingency that every project carries and generally, once you get through site work, um, you can start looking at if you have any money left in that, opportunities to spend to improve the, you know, the operational efficiencies, improve things for your tenants, things like that. And so that's, that's our current plan. Uh, with that is to revisit that once we kind of get through our site work to see how much money we have left in our, um, budget, uh, for that, to see if we can still find a way to, and hopefully do a little bit more work, um, on a specific system, uh, to see what we can care of ways to get the cost down and also to, um, um, realize some of the benefits from the tax credits that offset that. Cause we're located in a good position where we can get additional boost and benefits that will help offset the cost of the system.
Thank you so much for the update.
But no, but absolutely, that's definitely something that we're very interested in and we've tried to keep that option open for, or have kept that option open for us. Uh, and I personally think that, that that is, um, the direction we need to, to look going forward because that's a huge benefit, as you know, to the residents. If, you know, you have a place to live and you also have all your utilities provided, um, for you as well. Um, and I think the technology is there, it's just getting a good handle around the cost side of it right now, which, you know, it's a recent change in the tax law that makes it more, um, uh, opportune for affordable housing developments. Unfortunately, we're a nine percent development where our tax credit award has been fixed since twenty twenty-one. If we were a bond deal, our credits would actually go up to help absorb and defray some of that cost, a four percent deal, but we're not.
Thank you so much.
No, you're welcome.
Just kind of a comment to the council on this, not for you per se.
So you're good, you can sit down.
Yeah, I feel like the question not long ago would be asked of people in that gentleman's seat of like, whoa, what are you going to do to make affordable housing? And the answer was always, it's too expensive, I can't do it. And so we hear that right now with renewables. But what we've seen over the last two decades is local governments have been stepping up to create financial incentives for the type of affordable housing outcomes we want. And more and more local governments are stepping up to provide the financial incentives to create the climate future we want also. So if we really want to get real towards our outcomes, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And I hope we can do that more.
We're doing it right now. Okay, I think I got it. I think I got it. We're texting each other, I think I got it.
So the, this particular provision is not included in the current documents, but we do have the ability to add it this evening if, um, someone would like to include that as an amendment to the documents.
I think I got it. So it'd be like a move to approve Commonwealth Development's request for an additional four, for up to an additional four hundred and seventy-five thousand in funds, dependent upon current interest rates for a total Housing Trust Fund loan of nine seventy-five. How do you want me to word that? Does that work? Up to four seventy-five.
It's, um, it's really this U.S., U.S. Treasury ten-year yield rate?
You want me to speak to that particularly? Okay. Up to four hundred and seventy-five thousand in funds, dependent upon the U.S., the current U.S. Treasury ten-year yield at the time of closing, for a total Housing Trust Fund loan of up to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand to construct seventy-seven new affordable apartments.
Second.
Kind of wanted to say a hundred percent affordable apartments, but yes.
I, I think it's important that we identify that the amount would be reduced to that three hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, so we have to withdraw the motion. It was already seconded, so.
I would offer a friendly amendment to, um, that it include the reduction of three seventy-five thousand if the U.S. Treasury ten-year yield is below its current four point nine rate.
Okay, I accept that amendment.
At the time of.
Maggie, you got all that. Okay, we have a motion and a.
I accept the amendment, yep.
It's really just a mod, modification to the motion.
Okay.
Okay, it's, oh my gosh. I'm just double checking. I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak.
No.
No, we do not have anyone signed up to speak under the sign. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Thank you, Sasha. You can, you can go to bed now. We have, our next item is the revisions to the Public Art and Cultural Commission ordinance. And I have that, we have Carly Stevenson here. Are you making your debut at city council?
I am. So yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Carly Stevenson with Planning and Urban Design. I am a fifty percent of the time urban designer, fifty percent of the time public art coordinator on that team. And I am newly, within the past few months, the staff liaison for the Public Art and Cultural Commission. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Art and Cultural Commission to provide info on proposed updates to the existing PAC ordinance and to ask for your consideration to approve an updated, uh, PAC ordinance. So PAC acts as an advisory board to city council and, um, they believe that the requested ordinance changes really align with the mission statement that you can see in front of you. Um, in particular, the engage the creative sector as a major attraction for artists, cultural tourism and economic development, um, and also building partnerships and collaborations throughout Asheville's creative community. The reasons that PAC wants to, uh, update include that the ordinance was last reviewed or updated in two thousand and eleven, so it's been quite some time. There's a bunch of housekeeping items. PAC would also like to include events in their scope, so festivals and performances to that public art definition that's in the ordinance. And then also increase membership engagement, encourage partnerships and create a balanced membership. And this is being proposed through standing seats for art organizations and intentional language about equity and inclusion. And I know when we're talking about partnerships, we're really talking about internal and external partnerships. So internal with the Office of Special Events, kind of increasing capacity there and where there's synergies, um, and also, uh, increasing our reach into the arts community through these, uh, established arts organizations. This is our current member roster. Um, and as you can see, we have four vacancies or soon-to-be vacancies on the board and the board, uh, or the commission requested that we hold off on making those appointments until after we worked through these ordinance changes and brought those, uh, to you all. And the PAC members have been, um, or represented a wide variety, um, of artists in the community, from arts advocates, art nonprofits, um, and freelance artists. So we really have had a good mix, um, on the board up to this point. This is an overview of some of the more major milestones, um, in the history of the Public Art and Culture Commission. Highlighted here, um, in nineteen ninety-nine, that was when the Public Art Board, now PAC, was established by city council. In two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven was another more major moment for policy updates and implementation guidelines that were approved and also some changes to the ordinance. And they officially changed their name to the Public Art and Culture Commission. So that was the last time, um, anything like that has happened to the ordinance. Any changes? Now I'm going to get into a little more details of these ordinance revisions that are being proposed. First, changing the commission name to the Public Art and Culture Commission from cultural, and that's simply grammatical, sounds correct, is correct. Um, updating the name of the department that provides that staff support. And then broadening the definition of public art to include performances and festivals so that events is under the scope for the Public Art and Culture Commission. And then updating board membership composition, which I'm going to get into a little more detail here on the next slide. So this is the proposed language underneath the composition section in the ordinance. Um, we are not increasing the number of seats, we're keeping it at nine, but, um, requesting that it be split a little bit differently. So that six members are appointed by city council, um, from the community, from the public. And then three members would be appointed by directors or chairs from these following arts organizations. That would be Arts AVL, Explore Asheville, and a local higher education institution with a designated arts program. Um, and there are multiple advantages to dividing the membership this way or distributing the membership this way. Um, generally, it's about increasing our pool of resources and making sure that we're at the table when we need to be, when there are programs or events that align. Um, and also increasing our net to be able to advertise and reach artists with opportunities and get feedback for those opportunities. And we have been in contact with these organizations, asking if they would like a seat on the commission and all have acknowledged that they would.
Carly, why, um, on the last slide, the, two of them were like really prescribed to, um, have institutions names, but the, the last option was a higher ed organization?
Well, cause we realized there are, um, institutions, there are several within Buncombe County and we wanted to spread that to Buncombe County. So that could be, you know, UNCA, it could be AB Tech.
How would that be picked? Like what if three institutions come to the table in a cycle and say, we all want this one? How does, how does that work?
Yeah, so the commission would like to be able to select which, which institution that they reach out to and, and look for that seat from. And that's something that we'd like to include in our bylaws moving forward of exactly how that would work.
Okay, so you'll sort through a process, cause I could see that.
Yeah, I think that could be a little bit.
Lack of clarity, just being tricky.
Can we go back to that slide since we're asking questions in the middle? Um, just to be really consistent with what I said at boards and commissions, number one, I'm really glad we're having this conversation in new business instead of in the consent agenda where it would just breeze right past. Um, I understand that there may be some benefits to having organizationally appointed members. However, the Explore Asheville seat seems to me like a huge conflict of interest and power dynamic to have the TDA at the table because they host, um, free and at-cost events. And it, when I think about, like, I don't see, uh, an artist, for example, is going to be having a designated seat. Um, I am worried about the competition with local promoters, especially small businesses and entrepreneurs, especially when, um, anyone can apply. So the way that the, the layout is now, Arts AVL is like a direct partner with the city. Um, and then the higher education, I could see anyone from AB Tech's arts program to UNC to Ollie. But the Explore Asheville one is a, is a, is a strong note for me just because of the power dynamic to have a voting seat there. Um, it would just be a constant question of conflict of interest, in my opinion. So that's the same thing I said at, um, boards and commissions.
Yes, thank you for that. And it's, I, I, as I go through the, the next few slides, I'm going to talk about some of the benefits and why PAC, um, chose to have these seats designated, but do understand, um, your comment.
Thank you.
And noted. So why create a seat for Arts AVL? I think this one is a, a pretty seamless, um, dedicated seat for the Public Art and Cultural Commission. There are mission alignments. Um, one of their statements in their mission is that strong local government and community support where the arts are valued for their contribution, contributions to Buncombe County. They are the official lead arts organization for Buncombe County, so they get state funds and grants coming through them. Um, they've been a proven partner with the city on public art projects. They now manage the city's event support grant. They have a wealth of expertise in arts administration and grants and then have just a large inventory of artists that they've worked with and can help spread opportunities for artists through the Public Art and Culture Commission. Why create a seat for Explore Asheville? Um, one of their strategic imperatives is to promote and support Asheville's creative spirit. Um, and also this recognition that arts and tourism are very interconnected. Um, artists need people to come and see their events. There are different pieces of art. We, and arts are one of the reasons that Asheville is so well-known. Um, there is alignment with the Festivals and Cultural Events Support Fund. And, um, they also offer this opportunity to help us with marketing and promotion of our events. So really spreading the word when we do have artist events or different programs that we are putting on here at the city, look, we can be a partner there. And not to mention just better coordination on what they're working on and making sure that we are, um, communicating and coordinating with each other and aligning where we can. And then why create a seat for a local higher education institution with a designated arts program, connecting young artists with resources in the local creative network, marketing and promotion of Asheville events and public art opportunities with the students. So bringing them in, getting them involved, um, getting their feedback, building partnerships for programs and projects. Um, and as I mentioned, those eligible institutions are throughout Buncombe County, so it could be UNCA, Warren Wilson.
be UNCA, Warren Wilson, AB Tech that we pull from, and we'll work out the details of how that is decided with PAC as we get into our, writing our bylaws. Timeline-wise, September 21st, the proposed ordinance was drafted by PAC and approved unanimously. November 14th, we presented to the council's boards and commissions committee for review that passed two to one, and today, we are in front of you requesting adoption of this revised ordinance.
I have a motion, but it's not the same one that's on here. I move to recommend adoption of revisions to Article Three, Chapter Two, Division Eleven of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Public Art and Cultural Commission, with the exception of the Explore Asheville seat in exchange for a local artist seat designation.
Is there any interest in adding an additional seat for the artist instead of taking one away? I mean, I understand the concern around the tourism. In my experience, though, they are less quick to get behind projects we like if they have zero involvement.
From a funding standpoint.
Yes, that's what I mean. That's my experience from the last year, so I'm not necessarily, I have a lot of concerns about tourism, but I'm not concerned necessarily about them being on the board, but I do hear the.
With your experience on the sports commission, you would suggest we move this in the same direction of the sports commission?
No, I'm, no. I'm saying that they, I'm saying I'm experiencing a situation where I see them get more involved in projects that we want to put forward and request if they're already in the know and at the table and informed.
Which they could always apply for. We're talking about designated seats.
Well, I agree with Sage. I think if anything, if you want to add another seat for an artist rather than take away.
Does that get us to an odd number of issues?
Well, I'm not hearing a second, so if the motion fails, then.
Okay. Well, do we want to talk about adding a seat for an artist?
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
If there's no second here and the motion fails, you want to make a motion to add a seat for.
Add a seat, Sage.
She's welcome to.
Go ahead, go ahead. I don't have to.
I'm not amending the motion because my main issue is putting Explore Asheville at our public arts and culture as a designated seat.
That's your primary concern.
I'm fine, considering a point.
I'm prepared to make the motion as suggested. I move to recommend adoption of the revisions of Article Three, Chapter Two, Division Eleven of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Public Art and Cultural Commission.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Sandra, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We actually have someone to sign. Nina Tovish, you are signed up to speak under this item.
Good evening, mayor and council members. You've heard me before on this subject, and I'm just going to do more of the same. I moved to Asheville in large part because of the wonderful cultural scene here, and since living here for the last eleven years, I've become more interested in local government, and I'm currently working with the Boards and Commissions Realignment Working Group, and so my interest in this has been piqued. I truly believe in the importance of citizen participation in these committees, boards, advisory boards, and commissions. And I think it's important to highlight that the identity of Asheville, the community that lives here, is strongly aligned with the cultural resources that we have here. I'd also like to say that generically, I think there is no need or reason to have set-aside seats. All candidates should make their case for appointment, and council should decide amongst them. I, in general, don't see a strong advantage for set-asides. I think it has a potential to skew things one way or another. And in particular, the Tourism Development Authority should not have its thumb on the scale here. The point of the arts is not to draw in more tourists, it's to enrich the cultural life and first and foremost of those who live and work here, and then visitors can come and enjoy that expression of who we are. The TDA already has control of an enormous budget. They don't need to control any of the city's cultural development as well. If someone from the TDA wants to be on the commission, let them come and apply like anyone else. There should not be a set-aside for them. Mission of the TDA is to increase tourism. That's not the way government should be, they shouldn't be controlling the way government prioritized investment in the arts and culture of our community. Projects should be evaluated on their merits and for the greater good of our community. Let visitors enjoy the results of that expression of who we are. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, good, good work, council. We have finished our printed agenda. You guys can flee if you want to. All right, everybody, we are ready for a public comment. We have seventeen people signed up to speak, and everyone has up to three minutes to speak, and I think you've already all seen how that works with the lights on the lectern, and Maggie manages the time. Please, again, if you could stop talking when the buzzer goes off or when the red light and the buzzer go off, so that we can move on to the next speaker. We try to strictly enforce that so that nobody gets treated differently than anybody else in terms of how much time they have to speak.
Do the ten-minute rule, the ten-minute, three-hands thing?
You want me to do that? No one has signed up that way.
Oh, got it.
So. Okay, the first person's, and I'll try to tell you if you're on deck. The first person signed to speak is Claire Clark, and George Perkins is on deck. But you can't approach us directly, you've got to take that to.
Yeah, she'll pass him to.
To Clark, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Claire, and I come to you tonight as an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, as a nearly twenty-five-year resident of the city of Asheville, and as a human being of conscience, to call upon this body to take a stand and bring Asheville into line with the dozens of other cities across the United States who have passed resolutions calling upon the Biden administration and the United States government to bring pressure to bear upon the apartheid state of Israel to accept an immediate unconditional and permanent ceasefire in its infamous and open campaign of genocide and ethnic cleansing against the Palestinian people. For the last sixty-six days, the fascist Netanyahu regime, with the full support and backing of the Biden administration and the US government, has waged a naked campaign of extermination against the innocent people of Palestine, the likes of which the world has not seen since the days of Adolf Hitler and the Nazi Party. Over twenty thousand Palestinians have been slaughtered by the Zionist oppressors, including over eight thousand children. Thousands more lie buried beneath the rubble, and more than 1.5 million Palestinians have been driven from their homes. Those are the bare facts, visible for all the world to see. We owe it to the Palestinian people to do everything in our power to end their oppression and suffering. At every turn, the Biden administration and our own government has bent over backwards to give their full-fledged support to Zionist atrocities. The US funds, arms, and provides international political cover to the apartheid state as it commits the crimes of genocide and occupation. On Friday, the United States stood alone to veto a UN Security Council resolution to impose a ceasefire. If our leaders in Washington cannot find themselves, within themselves, the moral clarity to put an end to the crimes being committed by their client state, then it is our duty to apply the pressure to force them to do so, and that is where this council comes into it. This is where you can play your part. Silence in the face of oppression is complicity. The failure to take a stand in the face of genocide is complicity. Tonight, I call on this body to end its silence and end its complicity. I've provided each of you with a copy of a draft resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire, and I urge this council in the strongest possible terms to introduce and adopt it, take a stand, get on the right side of history, and unite the city of Asheville with the millions around the world fighting for justice, liberation, and free Palestine.
No clapping, please. Believe, believe us, we are veterans of this, and it takes a really long time, but you're very active with your, with your hands. Okay, hold on, let me just, for George Perkins, we'll hear from Lola Howman.
Hi, everyone on the council. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is George Perkins, I'm resident of Asheville on the border of Fairview. You just heard a very impassioned speech about the resolution that was put before tonight that you could use as a draft and edit and use to apply pressure and using your power as council members and representatives of this entire city to our federal representatives in the Senate and House. I plead with you as humans with hearts and as thinking humans to do your part and use the power that is given to you as elected officials to stop this pain and suffering happening on the other side of the world, to support the people in Gaza and the West Bank. You have power for a reason, and I hope you use it for good, because that's why power should exist. Please, just do what's right by your heart and minds. Stand in Palestine, apply pressure to those who have more power than us and more power than you in the ways you can. Free Palestine.
Thank you all, thank you. Much appreciated. Lola Howman, and then Myra Harvey.
Hey, y'all, I'm speaking in support of a ceasefire resolution. Full disclosure, I'm going to be paraphrasing Jewish Voices for Peace here, they're a phenomenal resource. But with every passing day, hour, and minute, the Israeli military is making good on its promise to open the gates of hell on two million Palestinians trapped under Israeli siege in Gaza. The loss of life over the last month has been horrifying, more than twenty thousand dead. But we must act now because the Israeli government is plowing towards a full genocidal attack on the Palestinians of Gaza. We demand a ceasefire now. In North Carolina, a North Carolina town who has already written an extremely eloquent ceasefire resolution is the town of Carboro. If Carboro can do it, I don't see why Asheville can't. And we could do an even better one. If you guys want to see Carboros, it's on townofcarboro.org. Definitely look into that, they did a really good job, and I think Asheville should be on the right side of history, just like them. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Myra Harvey, and then Julian Rose.
Hello, my name is Myra Harvey. I've been up here before for an environmental bill, and here's for round two. So firstly, I did want to appreciate and thank members of this council for discussing the deepening of, pardon me, of affordable housing rather than supporting increased cheap for-profit infrastructure. Just thank you all for that. But I digress. The Biden administration has officially gently urged Israel to protect the Palestinian citizens with no follow-ups or threats whatsoever, as if we don't have a hand in any of this. We've provided Israel with an estimated $160 billion since World War II. That's without taking inflation into consideration. Essentially, we've midwifed this entire situation, and it is our responsibility to stop it. We verbally urged them to be peaceful in their genocide, as if our country doesn't maintain billions off their exploitation of Palestine. This is not an argument of practicality, this is one of your own humanity, of how US people can stand by and watch mass genocide from home, knowing that you chose not to do anything towards your representatives, as well as us folks over here. The US has officially not sent troops to aid Israel. However, we have sent billions of dollars to their military, as well as F-35 fighters and guided missile carriers. The blood of more innocent children is piling onto our history books. What is the American spirit after all if not passively funding oppression of people by the means of secondhand imperialism? I'm asking you all as human beings to use your power. These people are being starved, murdered, and put in hermetic enclosure. Make it known that the people you represent won't accept this. These voters are watching all of you today. We will continue to protest. I think we all know that it is within the best interest of the city to prevent those protests from needing to happen. That is all. Free Palestine.
Julian Rose, and then Courtney O'Shea.
First of all, council, I would like to say thank you for your time tonight. I've been here since 4:30. While I and the others here are allowed to have a voice to speak with you today on a local government level, there are many people around the globe that are not allowed that same privilege, and right now actively, those are the people in Gaza. These people are actively suppressed, and the only voice we hear are their screams daily while they are being killed. And we can watch these videos online. And I have personally been scarred by videos of children, babies, women, and men who have been slaughtered and bombed, and their houses have been destroyed, and ninety percent of their population has been displaced from this area that is mainly the size of Manhattan within the main cities. There's 2.3 billion, million people living within this zone, and ninety percent of them have been displaced. We continue to supply them with weapons, we continue to supply them with white phosphorus bombs which are manufactured in New Jersey, which is a war crime to use on people. We are continually creating a genocide, we are funding this genocide, and we are pursuing our own selfish goals as the US government. Innocent civilians are being labeled as terrorists, children are martyred in the thousands, and the genocide continues as the death toll is over 23,000 people. The Gazan, sorry, the Biden administration has funded and supported it with no regard for humanity outside of the select few that the US allies with. We will not allow our voices to be silenced, we see the torturous conditions brought on by our weapons, we see the mislabeling of Palestinian supporters as anti-Semites. Just today, we saw the UN pass a ceasefire resolution which the US voted against and vetoed. When the US becomes isolated against the rest of the Western world for its support of a genocide, the only thing to do is to take action and stand against the Biden administration. That is why we are desperately urging you to adopt a ceasefire rev, ah, resolution that we are proposing. Show that you do not support the actions of our federal government, actions of cruelty and apartheid. Show that you stand with the humanity of the world, show that the government represents the people, and the people stand in solidarity with those silenced and those murdered by the US-funded genocide. Thank you, and free Palestine.
Courtney O'Shea, and pardon me, they just corrected the spelling, I apologize for that. Marcos Lugo is after.
My name is Courtney, I'm also an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and for the record, I will read the resolution that we handed to all of you who submitted tonight. Whereas all human life is precious, all are worthy of safety, dignity, and freedom, and the targeting of civilians is a violation of international humanitarian law. Whereas the city of Asheville stands in solidarity with the Palestinian people of Gaza, who are currently facing a campaign of ethnic cleansing, collective punishment, and genocide by the state of Israel. And whereas collective punishment is a war crime under international law and refers to a form of sanction imposed on persons or a group of persons in response to a crime committed by one of them or a member of the group. And this collective punishment of the Palestinian people includes shutting off all access to electricity, drinking water, food, and humanitarian aid. And whereas the UN says approximately two million people in Gaza may soon run out of drinking water and all medical care, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Palestinian lives are at imminent risk of death if a ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas Israel is the largest recipient of USAID with more than $3.8 billion in annual foreign assistance, 99.7% going to Israeli military, and whereas President Biden has asked for another $14.5 billion for Israel. And whereas a Reuters poll on November 15th revealed that the majority, 68% of Americans, support a ceasefire, and numerous human. and numerous human rights, racial justice, faith-based organizations, and labor unions have also come out in support of a ceasefire in the past month. And whereas the city of Asheville recognizes and sees the pain of its residents who have family and loved ones under bombardment and under siege, and hears the cries from its residents for a ceasefire and for implementation of international law. And whereas the federal government holds immense diplomatic and appropriation powers to save lives, now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Asheville calls upon our US congressional delegation, both in the senate and House of Representatives, to join us in, one, urging the Biden administration to immediately call for and facilitate de-escalation and an immediate ceasefire to urgently end the current violence. And two, calling upon the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance at the scale needed in the, into the north and south Gaza. And three, urging the Biden administration to work for the release of all hostages, including the thousands of Palestinians detained by Israel. And be it further resolved that the city of Asheville stands in clear support of the implementation of international law without exception, and particularly then when taxpayer monies are given, and thus demands that Congress and the executive branch hold Israel accountable to international law. And be it further resolved that the Asheville City Council asks the city clerk that copies of this resolution be quickly forwarded to the President of the United States and Asheville's congressional delegation. Thanks.
Marcos Lugo and then Lindsay Hartman. Oh, okay, uh, thank you. So Lindsay Hartman and then Noor Abdel Fattah. Pull, pull that microphone like right, yeah, so we can hear you. You're a soft talker.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, much better. I'm a citizen of Asheville and a constituent. Um, I wanted to just lend my support and echo what everyone else has already said about the situation, um, in Palestine. I do also believe that we are looking at an active genocide, and I think that that genocide is being, uh, enacted upon a group of people based on their nationality, race, and religion. Right now, we have 1.7 million people displaced, which means they do not have a home. They don't have access to basic things, uh, like running water, a place to prepare food. We have, according to the United Nations, um, one, sorry, 2.2 people at risk of starvation because of a total economic siege on Gaza. There is not really a way for things to come in, because Israel actually bombed, apparently, the, the gates to Rafa, which is the border with Egypt, where people could come in and bring aid in. They're not allowing any aid in. Um, I wanted to, uh, bring up a point that sixty-eight percent of Americans currently would like a ceasefire. However, that is not being reflected in our elected officials by them not voting, um, in that direction. Um, I have seen countless videos online of children who are suffering without any pain medication, any anesthesia, suffering horrific injuries that is just beyond the pale of what anyone should ever have to endure. There is the use of white phosphorus, which is being deployed on the civilians there, which is just absolutely horrifying. I saw a, a young teenage boy covered in third or second degree burns, rolling around on a hospital floor, begging, begging, begging. And there's no aid. There was no med- medicine available for this young gentleman to even get pain medication, uh, after he'd been, his building had been bombed by Israel. It is, it is things on the scope of human suffering that I've never, ever seen in my life, and I would urge, uh, the city of Asheville to please call upon our US congressional delegation, uh, both in the senate and the House of Representatives, to, uh, go for this, uh, same resolution that everyone has, um, in support of that, and we need to, uh, take an effort. I want our city, I love our city, and I want our city to stand solidly with human rights. Irregardless of gender, irregardless of race, irregardless of nationality, irregardless of any, uh, belief systems that we have, I want all of us to uphold of that core of value of human rights. And the last thing is, the UN resolution, uh, was voted today. I believe it was a hundred and fifty-three countries wanted a ceasefire, and I think only US and Israel and a few, like, islands, not to be disrespectful, voted against that. So the international community also stands with a ceasefire. I think I'm done. Is that done?
It'll, she'll reset it. Thank you.
Okay, so please, please, I would like for you guys, if you ever need any other additional resources, I'm available. Uh, you can find me by email, and I'm happy to provide you with additional, uh, information from other non-government organizations like Amnesty International and Doctors Without Borders.
Thank you so much.
And thank you. Free Palestine.
Uh, Noor Abdel Fattah and then Rebecca Roberts-Wolff.
Good evening, council members. My name is Noor, and I'm an Egyptian immigrant and a North Carolina resident. I'm also a live music lighting designer by trade, working primarily with a North Carolinian bluegrass band. I moved to the United States eight years ago as an asylum seeker. My parents made this decision under the perception of a free America in which democracy works and is for everyone. I would like to first and foremost state that the notion that Israel has the right to defend itself, to the point that now near twenty thousand Palestinian people have been murdered, cannot be defended as collateral damage. Supporting a ceasefire cannot be claimed as support for terrorism. It is not as simple and two-sided as that, and if you have been following the history of the Palestinian struggle, you must know in your heart that it cannot be equated like that. I know personally the strife of what it means to be affected by any extension of an Iranian proxy militia, whether it be Hamas, Hezbollah, or the Muslim Brotherhood. I say this having lived through the Arab Spring, the Egyptian Revolution, and having slept with a knife under my pillow for months while my education was halted at the age of ten because of these very groups. We cannot equate support for a ceasefire as support for terrorism or as anti-Semitism. I personally pray to no God, but I value the God of my friends and my neighbors. My Jewish brothers and sisters must know that a call for ceasefire is not a call for the eradication of Jews. My name is Noor, and I'm twenty-two, and Noor means light in Arabic. I have always loved my name and the meaning of it, too. And I'm a lighting designer now, too. We are foreshadowing by my parents. Um, in Arabic, I am the Noor of my father and grandfather's eyes, the light that to them sparkles brighter than the moon. In the initial list of about six thousand Palestinian martyrs released, I went in and searched for my name. Sixty-one Noors had been murdered. Two of them were twenty-two, my age. Thirty-five were younger. Their life has to be valued in Palestine and in Gaza, the same that I would hope for my life to be valued here. Their light, their Noor, was taken simply for being Palestinian, and their loved ones now live without the Noor that sparkles sweeter than the sea. I urge you, council members, to pass this resolution for a ceasefire, peace, and international law. We have lost too many innocent civilians already, and it is the duty of our public servants to uphold their promises of representing the people. I really deeply want to be a mother in my life, and I cannot imagine being a mother in this world. I really want to do that right now, and everyone around me is telling me to wait because I'm only twenty-two, but one day I really hope to be a mother. And I can't imagine doing that in the state of the world right now, and with our government right now not calling for an immediate ceasefire. This isn't about support for terrorism or whatever else. This is about support for human rights. I mean, twenty-two thou- twenty thousand people is, is so many, and they're all individuals. We cannot count them as a big number. They all have stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Roberts-Wolff and then Archer Rose.
Good evening. Um, I'm also here in support of the resolution for the ceasefire, and I really urge this council to take up and pass the draft resolution that has been handed to you. As, um, the people speaking before me have said, the loss of life so far has been unconscionable. Unimaginable. Eight thousand children. More than a third of the people killed have been children. The targeting of civilians, unacceptable. I want to highlight from the draft resolution that collective punishment is a war crime. This is clearly not a war against Hamas. This is a war on the Palestinian people. This issue is sometimes framed as supporting Jews or supporting Palestinians, as if we have to choose. That is a false dichotomy. Being anti-Zionist and recognizing that actions taken by the state of Israel are wrong is not the same as anti-Semit- Semit- um, Semitism, excuse me. I'm Jewish, and I stand against genocide with Palestinian people and all people. I know that this may seem very far away from western North Carolina, but the US government, as has been named, plays a major role in supporting this conflict and always has. Israel could not be doing what it's doing, could not be waging this genocide without United States military aid. Every locality, every city, every state holds power in this country. You hold power in your positions, and I ask you, please, to use that power to stand for what is so clearly right, to stand against this ongoing murder of so many thousands of people. Thank you.
Archer Rose and then Sydney Woodard.
Good evening. My name is Archer Rose. I'm twenty years old. Uh, my family is from Asheville, and I currently study at UNCA. I study sociology. And I'm speaking today to urge you to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. I'm sure everyone here has heard the phrase, "history repeats itself," and that's exactly what we're witnessing today. But we still have the power to put an end to unjust violence, genocide, destruction, and apartheid. This did not begin on October seventh, but this escalation has brought the eyes of the world's attention to what's happening there. It broke my heart to see how many people didn't care, but I ended up seeing one of the most unified social movements I've ever witnessed in my lifetime. The cries of the people in Gaza were heard around the world, and so many people were horrified at the amount of death, destruction, and suffering. We can see firsthand the lives of these people. They are not just a number. Human beings having their houses destroyed, losing their pets and their dreams. I'm asking you to call for a ceasefire for humanity, for democracy, because people all around the world, even of different political ideologies, people want a ceasefire, and if there's any democracy left in this country, I'd hope the voices and cries of the people will be heard. Nothing about what the state of Israel is doing is in self-defense. They have committed multiple war crimes and targeted civilians. Many scholars of genocide have identified this as what it is, a genocide. People around the world are crying for this to end. Jewish people around the world are screaming, "not in our name," and I hope you listen to us. We shouldn't let this become another horrifying and cruel historical event that we will look back in, on years later and condemn despite reaping the benefits of staying silent when it happened. They called Nelson Mandela a terrorist, and the US funding of apartheid South Africa and even Rhodesia allowed it to live longer than it could have, should have, and this needs to end now. This is not history yet. It's still happening, and every day without a ceasefire will result in the loss of money, many lives. Um, never again, not for anyone. This is why I'm asking you to call for an immediate, permanent ceasefire in Palestine, followed by the immediate entrance of humanitarian aid. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Sydney Woodard and then Diala Alabad. Sydney Woodard. Okay, um, Diala Alabad.
Thank you for allowing us to speak today. Um, I actually did not know that I would be here today, but when I heard about this, I knew that I did want to be here as both an Ashevilleian as well as a Palestinian. I wanted to be here for this appeal for the Asheville City Council to immediately adopt a resolution for a ceasefire. I came here today to represent my family, all of who have had to leave Palestine. Currently, I have relatives waiting to hear back from loved ones in the West Bank, Rafa, as well as Gaza. It's a really hard pill to swallow, to know the reality that the unwavering support of the United States, the land I was born and raised in, is essentially supporting my own genocide with zero consent. Community has been a big topic tonight, and in this room, and you all listened with such intent and empathy. And I implore you to take a look at what your fellow community members here today are asking you in terms of your solidarity and support in ending what can only be deemed as a genocide. It's a very lonely road to go through, and just being here tonight and hearing everyone's words and seeing everyone here tonight has meant a lot just to me and my family who are here today, so I thank you.
Thank you. Bennett Johnson and then Tiffany DeBalo.
Hi, my name is Bennett Johnson, and I'm a nursing student at AB Tech, and I live here. I'm just gonna reiterate, reiterate what Courtney said. So I'm asking the city of Asheville to stand in solidarity with Palestine, people who are currently facing a campaign of ethnic cleansing and collective punishment by the state of Israel and the US. Um, collective punishment and genocide is a war crime under international law, and this collective punishment of the Palestinian people includes shutting off all access to electricity, drinking water, food, and humanitarian aid. Uh, the UN says approximately, uh, two million people, um, in Gaza may soon run out of drinking water and medical care. Um, we're asking the US to stop, to stop aid to Israel. Um, Israel is the largest recipient of US aid, and President Biden has asked for another fourteen billion for Israel. Um, we're, at the very least, we're asking, um, you to recognize and see the pain of Asheville's residents um, who have family and loved ones under, um, bombardment and under siege. And hear, um, and hear the cries from your residents for a ceasefire and for um, an implementation of international law. Um, we're asking that the city of Asheville call upon the senate and House of Representatives to join us in urging the Biden administration to immediately call and facilitate a ceasefire to urgently end, uh, the current vi- violence. We're calling upon the Biden administration. Uh, we're calling you to, uh, tell the Biden administration to facilitate the entry of, uh, humanitarian aid and assistance into north and south, south Gaza. And we're also asking to urge the Biden administration to work for the release of the thousands of, uh, Palestinian, um, um, hostages detained by Israel. We're asking the city of Asheville to stand in support of the implementation of international law and demand that Congress and the executive branch hold Israel accountable, uh, to international law. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Tiffany DeBalo and then Fletcher Maffett.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and community. My name is Tiffany Flunery DeBalo, and I am a direct descendant of the children of the African diaspora. I am here standing in favor of asking council to please consider allowing the reparations commission to have extended time on the timeline. I am currently a reparations commission member in an alternate. I just wanted to share with you that central to the idea of the American dream lies an assumption that we all have an equal opportunity to generate the kind of wealth that brings meaning to the words, "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." However, this belief has been defied repeatedly by the United States government's local and local municipalities, and the own decrees that denied wealth-building opportunities to black residents. Currently in California, California's legislature has extended the California Reparations Task Force, and we are asking that Asheville City Council and Buncombe County Commissioners consider the same. For the past two years, we've been working diligently to first do something that seems impossible. It is hard to come together as community members in a society and a space where we have been blocked and pushed away and not allowed to sit at the table. So therefore, when it is coming down to having an ability to now make decisions on a government level, we lack that capacity. And so we do plead that you consider us to have this extension of time due to the fact that we've had many changes based on our project manager, based on city staff changes, and also based on different changes with our commission members. I want to remind you that a hundred years ago, this room would have been looking extremely different. Half of us that's here, specifically December twelfth, nineteen twenty-three, would not even be considered to be in this space. And I say that because if it wasn't for movements like the Women's Liberation Movement, the abolitionists. the Women's Liberation Movement, the abolitionists, and reparations, along with Dr. Martin Luther King and the Civil Rights Movement, we wouldn't be here today. So I'm asking you to really give this a consideration because this is not only new, but this also feels almost impossible. The hidden undertones of mistrust seems evident coming from this council and commission members. But we cannot do this alone. Be revolutionaries with us, and let's do this together, because together we can. Thank you.
Thank you. After Fletcher Maffett, Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Good evening, council. In comparison to what's been already said, I feel like my topic pales, but I'm gonna say what I have to say anyway, because I waited around. I wanted to talk about loud cars. And I heard a lot about spending money tonight, and I want to talk about a way to make money for, for the city. We've all heard it. There are million cars around. They proliferate all around the U.S. Modified engines, exhaust mufflers, unnecessarily high noise. There's no justification, no benefit. And I wanted to talk about precedent because I didn't really understand this issue until I started reading about it. There is no public benefit to, to loud cars. They create more, they create more pollution, cause high stress. It's detrimental to our health, detrimental to our hearing, our stress. It disrupts our rhythms. It messes with the natural environment. There are multiple cities that have already passed noise laws to stop this. The closest one to us is Knoxville. They just finished an analysis that, I don't know, it's over a few months. New York City has just done it, Paris, London. Nobody wants to hear it. There's no reason, no benefit. This Knoxville analysis and case study was really interesting. They, they found over two weeks, like 430 instances that could be ticketed. If you, I don't know how much a noise violation costs in Asheville, but, I mean, if you take a very low number, a camera installation, an acoustic camera installation would pay for itself 10 times over in a single year. You could use the money, I think, two cameras, based on, again, just like very conservative calculations. Two cameras would pay for that $250,000 a year ask for that development that we were talking about earlier. The cameras cost about $25,000. I mean, if you did one ticket a day, which is very conservative, and you send a ticket out for 200 bucks, which is one-fourth of what New York tickets people for, you'd make about $100,000 with one camera. So just consider, consider the payoff. I think it's there. You quiet the city.
Thank you. If you can give your email address to Maggie, the clerk right there, we can send you, you have it. Information on our updated noise ordinance that talks about the decibel levels and specifically cars, but then our city attorney can also send you some information about North Carolina law on camera enforcement, which is a problem. So, thank you though.
Cameras or microphones?
No, you can't, I mean, just, anyway.
Microphone?
There's a reason when you drive around North Carolina, there's no cameras. Jonathan Wayne Scott.
I'm, I'm hearing that from downtown folks a lot, though.
All right. Hey, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. Next year is gonna be an election year, right? And so I'm gonna take us back to voter registration statistics back in 1896. I'd also like to thank Dr. Mullen for coming out and Tiffany. And I also support a continuation of the reparations process because I think there's a lot more that could be learned from it. I think that there's been some things that have been left out. So back in 1900, this is from July 28th, Asheville Citizen Times, 1900. This is, again, up leading, leading up to the statewide referendum for the literacy test. And there was this table that was published of voter registration statistics here in Asheville. And I won't go through, you know, all the math real quick. But back in 1900, the black voter registration here in Asheville was 25.7%, and it was divided up into six precincts. And you can see the black and white concentration there. In the first precinct and second precinct, black voter registration was 41.41%. And in precinct two, it was 46.43%. And then this article talks about the numbers from 1896, which was the last year that they had the books closed on that. It says, "A comparison between the registrations of that year and this year will be interesting. The figures are as follows," and I won't go through it all, "but in the city election, black voter registration at that time was, I believe, 38% compared to what it is today." And then in four years, the black voter registration was cut by about a third. And so it was saying here, "The Negro registration is thus cut down nearly one-half compared with the last new registration, while the white vote has increased. The imported Negro will not be a factor in this year's election." So this is in discussion about slavery. As Dr. Mullen has talked about, I believe he was talking about data-based and narrative-driven issues, specific harms caused to the African-American community by the white community. And the best evidence of that is in our elections. It's data-rich, it's narrative-rich, and a review of how we elect. This body here would really answer a lot of questions as to how it was that blacks were left out of the conversation for so many years. So I look forward to talking to you more about that next year. Happy end of the year, and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. Gabriel Nassar.
Hi, I didn't, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but hearing what everyone else has been saying regarding the notion to adopt a ceasefire resolution, I felt moved to add to it, even though I have not much to add in the way of the details of what's been going on. But I can say that I too am a Palestinian-American and member of the Asheville community. I've been living here for about six or seven years. And my direct family was displaced by this same regime two generations ago. Some came here to the U.S. while some moved to Lebanon. And Israel has been wreaking terror and destruction, not only on innocent Palestinians, but also in Lebanon and in Syria with near impunity because of its overwhelming support from the U.S. government. And if you're seeing, or if you've seen the footage from civilians in Gaza as well as the West Bank, then you know how sickening this genocide is. But if you've chosen to look away, I implore you to observe with an open heart and to ask yourself seriously, as a human being, can we accept this? If you can justify the horrors being inflicted on children in Gaza, then you would have no place to deny someone else justifying those same horrors being inflicted on your own children. Is it not our responsibility to exhaust every single last tool at our disposal to say collectively that this is not the world that we want to live in? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job with the hands, y'all. Thank you.
Yep, that concludes the public comment portion of our agenda, and it concludes our agenda. I thank you all for working with us tonight, and I'm glad you were able to stay for the whole meeting. And maybe some of it was of interest as well to you. So, so that concludes our agenda for this evening, and we are adjourned. I don't know where my, I was supposed to do that.